Evening and welcome everyone. It's the planning board meeting for the township of Parsippany. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and then that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. This, uh, this meeting can be accessed via WebEx through a link provided on the town's website. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Deitch. Councilman D. Piero.
Yeah.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yeah.
Mr. Fergeri.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Mendel.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Chairman Von Aken.
Here.
We also have with us tonight our board planner, Ms. Favate, our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano, and our board attorney, Mr. Wenzel.
Excellent. Would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. On the agenda for tonight are two items. We'll start with our resolution and then we have one item to be presented. The first resolution is application number 20:516. That's RRT Two Campus LLC, the Two Campus Drive project. Do any members have any comments or questions that they have not previously risen or discussed prior to this? Okay, would any members care to make a motion on this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, an application number 20:516, RRT Two Campus LLC, Two Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.20, 1633 Littleton Drive. I move that we grant preliminary and final major site plan with C variance that we move the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Dinsmore. Do we have a second?
Second, Mandel.
So noted. Nora, please call the roll.
D. Piero.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Fergeri.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Von Aken.
Yes. All right, very good. Moving on to the next point of our agenda, we have the application presentation of the district at 1515 Urban Renewal, comma, LLC, at 1515 Route 10, Block 200, Lots 1.2 and 1.03, application 21503. This is preliminary and final site plan, preliminary and final major subdivision, a C variance, and a major soil moving permit. Do we have representation for the application?
Yeah, so Tom Mallman, Dave Pitney, on behalf of the applicant, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you fine.
Terrific. Uh, thank you very much. Good to see you all virtually. We have a nice presentation planned for you this evening. I'll give a brief introduction of the project as well as our team. I suspect many of you are familiar with this project because it's been talked about in Parsippany now for many years. This is a site on Route 10 as the chairman has indicated. It's a site that was designated as an area in need of redevelopment several years ago. Uh, as part of that, there was also a redevelopment plan that was adopted, a redevelopment agreement entered into by the applicant. Uh, the property is in your affordable housing, you're probably aware of. And this project is consistent with the redevelopment plan with a couple of minor uh, i- issues that we'll talk about during the presentation.
Chairman. I'm sorry. Mr. Von Aken.
Yes, Mr. Dinsmore.
And I've actually got a question for our attorney. And that is that, uh, two years ago, my mother's estate was represented by Dave Pitney. And up until about six months ago, my daughter-in-law worked for Dave Pitney. And I, I don't personally believe that there's any conflict of interest anymore, but I don't want to leave this hanging and have our attorney come back and say, why didn't you say something?
Okay, uh, Mr. Dinsmore, I appreciate you advising us of that. Uh, your, uh, mother's estate that was represented by Dave Pitney, that estate is now closed?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, were you the executor?
I was one of the three executors.
Okay. And, uh, Dave Pitney was the representative, was the attorney for the estate?
Yes.
Was not the, Dave Pitney was not your personal attorney?
Not in this endeavor, no.
Okay, and, uh, your daughter worked for the very fine law firm of Dave Pitney at one point?
Law, just.
Okay, and, and she has not?
She worked for Dave Pitney up until about, uh, four, five, six months ago, I've forgotten which. She no longer works for them.
Okay, and, uh, you, did, would she at any point, uh, during time she worked at Dave Pitney, did she reside with you?
No.
Okay. Uh, I'm, Mr. Dinsmore, I, I appreciate you raising the con- uh, the, the question. I don't believe there is a, a conflict here. You are not currently being represented by Dave Pitney. You have no immediate family member that's employed by Dave Pitney, no immediate family. And even before that, your immediate family member was not residing with you, uh, at Dave Pitney. So I don't believe that, uh, you respond to a conflict category. However, I always preface that comment with the following. If for some reason you feel you are in conflict, that it would give you some, uh, question in your mind as to the independence of your ability to reach a determination as this application, then you should recuse yourself.
I do not feel that I will have my opinion on this particular application swayed by any previous, uh, relationship with Dave Pitney.
Mr. Mallman, do you have any issue with Mr. Dinsmore continuing to serve on the planning board uh, as to this application, knowing, uh, the information that you have?
I do not. I appreciate Mr. Dinsmore raising the issue with us and bringing it to our attention. But then, given the facts he's laid out, I agree with you, Mr. Wenzel. I don't see a c- a conflict that would preclude him from participating in this case, so I have no objection.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Dinsmore. Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you for that, uh, time to resolve that. Uh, I think we can, uh, continue to proceed with, uh, Mr. Mallman's, um, opening statement.
Good, thank you. Yeah, just describing to the board the fact that this property has been in area near redevelopment, redevelopment agreement, redevelopment plan, it's in your affordable housing plan. Since property has been discussed publicly for a number of years, we're happy to finally get to the planning board for a site plan application hearing. I was also going to mention that part of the property is in Hanover Township, so the rear portion of the site. We have a pending application in Hanover as well that we'll talk about this evening as part of the case. That application has not yet gone to a public hearing. It's still pending a review and, and waiting, waiting for scheduling. This project, as I mentioned before, is a mixed-use project. It's residential, it's retail, it's restaurant space. There's also a large outdoor plaza, which we'll talk to you about, that can be used for public functions. There are some parking decks, landscaping, some access improvements that we're dealing with DOT on. So we've got a very comprehensive prop- or package of witnesses and experts and exhibits to put forth for you this evening. I just want to run through briefly the team members that we have, Mr. Wenzel. We have six witnesses that we intend to call. We also have about 60 exhibits that we've sent in to Nora that hopefully you've all had a chance to look at. Let me just run through quickly who the witnesses are going to be. I'm not sure we'll get to all of them this evening, but let me just give you a sense of what, what's coming before you. Uh, Mark Potchmit is with the applicant. He'll speak briefly about who they are, why they're excited about this project. Eric Schwartz is our civil engineer from Langen. Pete Peacock, our architect. Tom Bauer, landscape architect. Alan Lothian, also with Langen, our traffic consultant. And Sean Moranowski, also with Langen, our planning consultant. Uh, and Mr. Wenzel, we have, in the, in the package that we submitted to Nora, we actually listed all 60 exhibits. So we've kind of pre-marked them to make this somewhat easier, given the volume of exhibits that we have. So what's your pleasure on that? Do you want to just mark them now upfront, or should we just do each one as we go through it?
Well, all, if, if you're going to be referencing, if your witnesses are going to be represent- referencing documents which have been provided to the planning board, there's no reason to mark them as, uh, exhibits per se, because they've been submitted to the planning board. If you have something that is brand new, for example, a color rendering of a site plan, we'll mark that as an exhibit A, because that may not have been given to the planning board. So otherwise, if, if these are documents which have already been provided to the planning board, you can just have your witnesses refer to them, uh, as to their, um, numbers at the bottom of whatever sheet for the architect, for the engineer, so on and so forth.
Yeah, we're not going to re- we have filed, obviously, sub plans with the plan, but we also submitted these 60 exhibits to the board, I guess, last week in, in accordance with the, the governor's order, the court order regarding a scheduling for exhibits. These are all exhibits, they're not, they're not been previously given to the board, so I think we should properly mark them. And again, our, our first exhibit will list all 60 of these and tell you exactly what they are. And then our folks will go through them one by one. We have them chronologically listed by the way our witnesses will present them. So I think, I think we should mark them just to be safe, because they're not exactly, they weren't part of the original submission back in January, whenever we filed the, the application at the outset.
Okay, so as you go along, they can mark them. Where I de- I mean, they're pre-marked, so you can just identify them. We don't have, we don't have to, you know, make it too, too cumbersome.
That's what I was hoping we could do, just kind of dispense with the formality of going through each one and telling you what it is, the witnesses will just run through them, uh, your chronologically.
No, we, we like to hear, we like to hear from the witnesses.
Perfect. So once you have any questions, it'll be me, I'll call our first witness, Mr. Potchmit. And there he is, I see him on the screen.
Yes. Good evening. We'll see how this, uh, this, I think Eric Schwartz is, uh, putting my slides up for me. We'll see if that could work.
We have to get you sworn first, Mark, so.
Let's do it.
Got it.
Uh, all right, sir, uh, do you swear for and tell the truth for this planning board tonight in this virtual format?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and even though your name comes up on the WebEx system, can you do us a favor and state and spell your name for the record?
Sure, Mark Potchmit. It is M.A.R.K. and then Potchmit, P.O.T.T., S.C.H., M.I.D.T.
Right.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, but, but I'm sorry, but, Mr. Chairman, before we get started with testimony, would you like me to go through the waivers as is customary?
Yes, uh, but I, I also have another item I'd like to touch on just administratively. Uh, but let's swear this witness and finish that, and then we'll take care of that.
Okay, well, uh, Mr. Chairman, we've sworn in the witness. Uh, we were, he's, uh, not being presented as an expert, he's being presented as a representative of the applicant. So I just asked Mr. Mallman, uh, to, uh, uh, hold for a moment while we have, uh, Ms. Favate do the waivers, and we can also address the chairman's question.
Okay, I'll get started, Ms. Favate. Um, I just want to address it, you know, uh, due to the complexity of your presentation, we'd normally like to get things wrapped up around 10. I'd also like to make sure that we make time for any, um, any public, uh, comments that, uh, would like to be made. So, uh, I'd like to set a deadline of 9:45 for, for the last, um, testimony to start. You can run past that, but no additional, um, witnesses after 9:45 tonight. Is that acceptable to you?
Yes, no objection.
Okay, and then I will go over to Ms. Favate to discuss the waivers on this application.
Yeah, just real quick, and then I know they're eager, we're all eager to get started with witnesses. Um, we, we did request additional testimony, which we've laid out of the memo on, on things like, uh, floor plans and fences and, um, the usage of the buildings. But in terms of waivers, uh, we did recommend granting the waivers for final site plan, as is very typical. Uh, they, they have a combined, uh, preliminary and final application, so we recommend waiving those conditions of the final, uh, site plan. And that's it.
Okay, nice and easy. Do we have a motion to accept the waivers?
I'll move Dinsmore for the waivers mentioned in the memo from, uh, BFFJ Planning dated March 1st, 2021.
All right, very good. Do we have a second?
Second, Mandel.
All right, we'll do all in favor.
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Say nay. No opposed. Waivers have passed. Mr. Mallman, back to you.
Good, thank you. So Mr. Potchmit has been sworn. Uh, is Eric Schwartz controlling the exhibits? Do we know that, Nora? Does he have access to them?
He will be.
I got it now.
All right, terrific. All right, so, Mark, while Erica's getting ready, why don't you, I'd like you to stop by, having introduced yourself to the board, tell them who you are, come over, the history of your company, and then we'll kind of talk about the project and why you're excited about it, so go ahead, please.
Sure, we jump in, Tom, whenever, whenever need be. Uh, this is the infamous, uh, exhibit list that Tom was referring to, our exhibit A1. So we'll get that out of the way quickly. Um, but once again, my name's Mark Potchman. I'm a co-founder at Stanberry Development. I'm here this evening with my partner of over 20 years, John Meyer, who is out there in Zoomland somewhere. Fifteen, our project, the district at 1515, joint venture development with Stanberry. We're out of Columbus, Ohio, and Claremont Development, who is out of, uh, Morristown, New Jersey. Moving on, uh, when John and I started Stanberry, it was over 20 years ago now, our, our very first project was a shops at Union Hill, which is just three miles down, down the road, down Route 10, um, in Denville, New Jersey. Hopefully you guys recognize this, uh, this project, but we purchased this property from the estate of Frank Knuth, and then Mayor, uh, Denville Mayor Gene File requested that we pay homage, uh, to the property association with the historic Knuth Farm, which is directly to the, the rear of this project. So we instructed our design team to get creative with the, uh, with the building facades, which resulted in, in what we think, what I think, is some of the, the most iconic retail facades anywhere. And Eric, you can go to the next slide there, you'll see slides of, uh, images of Banana Republic and, uh, the Gap, which were done in a very barn-esque styling, which we think really turned out great. Uh, the town loved it, the retailers loved it. We, we feel it's, it's been a real successful project for us and for, and for Denville. Uh, from there, we went on to develop a dozen lifestyle centers across five states, Ohio, New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Florida, Florida. Uh, our projects included, in New Jersey, included, uh, projects in North Brunswick, Old Bridge, Cross Keys, and Flemington, in addition to, uh, to Union Hill. And they're all similar to, uh, Union Hill with, anchored with national fashion retailers. However, with the onset of online retailing, uh, we felt the need to, to pivot away from fashion anchored centers into, into more of a, a, uh, mixed-use arena, um, which led us to looking for areas, uh, we wanted to anchor these mixed-use centers with, uh, a, a strong restaurant presence. So we went in search of areas that had strong daytime dem- demographics, so that the restaurants could enjoy a strong lunchtime, uh, crowd, in addition to the evening crowd. This basically led us directly to 1515 Route 10. Um, so if you go to the next slide, Eric. This area has great visibility, great access. Um, the daytime grammar, demographics are wonderful with the, the, uh, corporate office parks in the, in close proximity. Um, so we felt this would be a home run. Six years ago, this project, this property was vacant when we purchased it. You may know it as the old Intel or Dialogic buildings. Uh, today it remains vacant. It's been a long road for us and our team to get this, to get to this evening's hearing. Um, but we remain committed and excited, uh, for what we're presenting this evening. Our vision for 1515 is really an evolution of the Union Hill lifestyle format. Basically, if you could envision taking Union Hill and wrapping it around a activated main street with residential units on top of it, uh, that is what we're, we're, we're looking to, striving to achieve here. To help us realize this vision, we've joined forces with Claremont, um, who brings a depth of knowledge and experience of high-end residential development in New Jersey. I think you probably got to skip next slide, Eric. This is, uh, a, a on-ground view of, of, uh, of our building there on, on Route 10, as it sits, basically sits today. And then the next slide is a gives you a sense of, uh, of, of Claremont Development's, um, uh, volume of work and experience in specifically New Jersey. These three projects, two in Jersey City and one in Park Ridge, represent roughly 750 units. And we are thrilled to have Claremont by our side through this process, um, and all the way through construction and, and ownership of the, of the project. You can go to the next slide, Eric. This is another example, um, of a Claremont project in Inglewood called Evo Inglewood. Uh, it's probably the most light, uh, 1515. On the left, you see an architectural rendering. Uh, the other two slides in the middle and on the right are construction, uh, progress photos. The one in the middle probably shows it best how they're wrapping a parking deck, a structured parking deck with residential units. Uh, you, that was taken, the middle shot was taken last September. The, uh, one on the right was taken in March this year. We'll be doing, presenting the same concept here with 1515, as we are wrapping around our, our parking deck also with, uh, with residential units. So, a little summary on, on kind of the past six years, we've been continually working, uh, with Parsippany to not only refine our vision, but also incorporate the town's vision into this project. This effort's included, um, classifying our property as an area in need of redevelopment, as Tom had mentioned. Um, then we, we pursued, uh, collectively a redevelopment plan. And then that was basically repeated two more times. The first time it was repeated as we Hanover and Parsippany, um, annexed property into each other to square off the, the parcels, which created the need to go through the process again. Uh, and then once again, with, with COVID, it disrupted the whole world and, and our project was, was, uh, shown to that correct category as well. We had to, to revise our redevelopment plan one more time, and those revisions, the resulting of those revisions is what we're presenting, uh, presenting this evening. In the end, 1515 has been designed to incorporate inclusionary housing, um, provide some much-needed relief to the Route 202, Route 10 intersection. Hey, homage to Gustav Stickley. Uh, and our main street design will provide the basis of an ongoing partnership with Parsippany Parks and Rec to bring public events, uh, on an annual basis to, to this project. We have again challenged our design team to deliver an iconic, iconic project that we think even Mr. Stickley will be proud of and would approve of. Uh, so with that, it's going to be a long night, and I appreciate the time constraints, but I will turn this over to our team to walk us through how we are turning this vision into a reality, starting with Parsippany's own Langen Engineering and Eric Schwartz. And once again, Tom, I, I don't know the, the, the protocol here, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions now or at a later time point. I think you're on mute, Tom.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate, the board has questions, they can certainly ask them now, or they can ask them at some point later if they come to mind at a later date, but any questions for Mr. Potchmit?
I'd just like to say hello to Mark. Been a while. It has been a while. Hey, Michael, how are you? Fine, thank you. How are you? I'm looking forward to getting back to Parsippany one of these days. It's been a while. Hopefully with a backhoe or something.
So if there are no questions for Mr. Potchmit, I'll call Mr. Schwartz.
Go ahead, Mr. Mallman.
Eric, are you there?
Yes, yes, you can hear me okay?
Yeah, let's get you sworn in, please.
All right, Eric, uh, I see you now, okay. Eric, do you swear for and tell truth for this planning board tonight in this virtual format?
Yes.
Okay, Eric, even though I see your name, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
That's Eric Schwartz, that's E.R.I.C., last name S.C.H.W.A.R.Z.
Okay, and, Mr. Mallman, you want to, uh, put on, uh, gentleman's, uh, credentials?
Yeah, I'll call off. I'm, which is, are you a licensed engineer in this state?
Yes, I am. Tom, we, we, we don't hear you now.
This is all in case Tom doesn't turn into a cat.
You're still on mute, you're off mute, Tom.
Is that correct?
We can hear you now.
All right, Tom, Tom, we, we, you blanked out. We couldn't hear anything you were saying. I'm sure it was very eloquent. Uh, but all we heard was, uh, that Eric is licensed in the state of New Jersey, and then you, you muted from there. So you want to go back and proceed with that?
Just give us your background, your educational experience, Mr. Schwartz, please.
Yes, sure. So, um, I have a bachelor's of science in civil engineering from the University of Delaware. I graduated in 1993. I've worked as a, a civil consulting engineer, uh, since then, so I guess coming up on 28 years. Um, in addition to being licensed in New Jersey, I'm in license, I'm licensed in nine other states as well, um, as a professional engineer. And I have, uh, presented before numerous other planning boards in the state of New Jersey, uh, as well as, uh, boards and, and agencies in other states.
And you're familiar with this site and this pending application?
I'm very familiar with this site. We've been involved with it for, uh, a number of years now, and, um, yes, very familiar with the application.
Any questions regarding his qualification as a professional engineer?
No questions, Mr. Mallman.
Okay, Mr. Schwartz, why don't we start, but you can pick up with your next exhibit, which I think is A8, which is the existing aerial photograph, and then walk us through existing conditions and then proposed conditions.
Okay, is the screen up?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, very good. Um, I didn't mention before, I, I'm, uh, I am employed now with Langen Engineering and Environmental Services. We're located at 300 Kimball Drive, uh, in Parsippany. And, uh, I've been with Langen since 1998.
Go to. I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I did want to add, I, I noticed Mr. Dadih is, uh, joined us, so, um, um, did did you get to hear the first, uh, testimony, Mr. Dadih?
No, I did not.
Okay, uh, Mr. Wenzel, what's the status of, uh, of, uh, Mr. Dadih?
Well, he can.
I don't mean to interrupt. He, uh, came on right after we approved the resolution.
Yeah, so I missed that.
Yep.
Okay, then, then we should be fine. I just wanted to clarify. Um, so we have an extra member who is, uh, able to, um, to vote on this measure.
Right.
Sorry for the interruption.
No problem. Hi, Mrs. Schwartz, please continue.
Okay. Um, so on the screen, we have our first exhibit, uh, labeled as A-8, titled Existing Aerial. Uh, the site is identified as 1515 Route 10 and Block 200, Lots 1.1, 1.2, and 1.03 in Parsippany. And also Block 303, Lots 1301 and 14.01 in Hanover Township. Uh, the site is occupied by two vacant office buildings totaling about 309,000 square feet with about 1,064, uh, surface parking spaces spread between the two townships. Uh, the green boundary line on the drawing, uh, shows the limit of the property. The site is located in the Research Office Laboratory, or ROL zoning district, and the Town Center Redevelopment TC-1 area overlay zone. Uh, access to the site exists from Route 10 and from Johnson Road to the west. Uh, there are two adjacent parcels occupied with other office buildings known as Delta Dental, the building in the middle of the screen, and the octagon, the building further to the left. A joint, uh, private access road exists between, uh, or I should say, behind the three parcels connecting them to Johnson Road. Uh, the current, which is post-annexation township line, is shown in red, uh, splitting the project site between Parsippany on the north side, abutting Route 10, and Hanover Township on the south side. I'll show a comparison of the pre- and post-annexation township line in the next exhibit for further, uh, clarification. Okay, this is exhibit A-9 titled Township Line. The annexation of land between Parsippany and Hanover was approved by both municipalities in 2019. And this exhibits illustrates both the former and current township lines. The former boundary crossed the 1515 Route 10 property diagonally is shown on the left side in yellow. And the new line is shown on the right side, resulting in two parcels that are each more or less rectangular in shape. And much more functional from a development perspective.
And that was the motivation for the annexation in the first place? Is that a fair statement, just to make these more regular parcels?
Yes, to my knowledge, I was not part of that annexation process, but correct, where you have parking. Clearly shown on the left side up with the buildings, but yet it was in township of Hanover instead of in the township of Parsippany where the where the buildings are located. So as the site plan is is shown tonight, as well as it is in the application, it'll probably become much more clear. The the benefit of having the rectangular properties.
Thank you.
And our next exhibit. Is number A-10 and it's titled Proposed Aerial Overlay. And the intent of this exhibit is to is to show some of the phasing. I am going to get into a few more exhibits after this that will explain the phasing of the property of the project in much more detail. So the this exhibit shows the site, the proposed site plan overlaid on an aerial existing aerial photograph. The precipitating portion project will be constructed in two phases. Phase one is shown in green with New Jersey DOT roadway improvements also being shown in red, which will connect the property into the Dryden Way jug handle. Phase two A and B are two A is shown in blue and two B is shown in yellow. It's really just part of a phase two and you'll you'll hear more as I explain that sequencing of construction of why we call it two A and two B. And the current township boundary is is shown in black highlighting the two parcels. There'll be another phase that we call the Hanover Fades, which involves it's shown in magenta. And that is a proposed hotel project and some parking improvements located in Hanover Township. The next exhibit A-11 titled Overall Site Plan. Is a colorized version of the overall site plan that is in the application package. Again, to help explain the the phasing in a little more enlarged manner. So the improvements in green are our phase one. Includes building A on the right side as well as internal roadway improvements on the left and in the bottom center of the project. And then also the stormwater management basin. There's an existing basin there today and we're going to be improving it more or less doubling the size. To meet the regulations that were in place. Again, the roadway improvements connecting to the driveway are shown in red. Then we move on to the phase two, which will start with that blue building B and then culminate with the black building C. And again, the Hanover improvements for a future hotel are shown in magenta. Some statistics about the overall site plan. It's a mixed use project with three buildings in Parsippany totaling about 255,000 square feet. Resulting in a 52% tract building coverage where up to 55% is permitted. The three buildings will include 498 residential units, including 42 affordable units and 49 age restricted units. 35,000 square feet of retail use and 25,000 square feet of restaurants serving an estimated 1,000 seats. Total parking provided will be 1,077 spaces, which includes 868 spaces in a parking garage. And 209 surface outdoor spaces. The proposed impervious area is 83.6%, where up to 85% is permitted. Residential amenities are provided in the residential buildings for their tenants. And an outdoor common plaza area of public interaction and events is proposed in the middle of the project in between buildings B and C. That's again the blue and black. The project stormwater management basin, again, in the lower right corner of the exhibit is shown in green and is located in the Hanover Township. And that will also be fully constructed and complete as part of the phase one construction plans. Plans also propose a future hotel with surface parking in Hanover to be constructed independently of the other three buildings in Parsippany. The application also proposes 48 surface parking spaces to be constructed in the rear of the Delta Dental lot. As shown in the lower left of our drawing in magenta color. And that will actually share parking for the proposed hotels. Access to the site will be as follows from Route 10 in the upper left. Of the exhibit. Will come on to what we're calling West District Drive, the vertical road of green on the left side. And that's located between the Delta Dental projects or Delta Dental property and the project site. Vehicles will then continue eastward through along the green road to heading towards Dryden Way. And then right before the red New Jersey DOT improvements, it will make a left into the project site. And have access to the future garage in in building B as well as the surface parking. Exiting movements are available on the west side of the project to the left side of the upper left blue area. And and then they can proceed to the right and up onto Route 10. Also exiting movements can come back down through the center of the project, back onto our green road and either head. To the west to Johnson Road or back to the north throughout 10 or to the east along the red improvements onto the Dryden Way jug handle. There are three monument signs and one freestanding pylon sign composed. And our professional planner will discuss their signs and the requested arrangements associated with them in his later testimony. Going to move to the next exhibit. This exhibit is, and now I'm going to go through the phasing much more specifically. So exhibit A-12 is titled Phase One Site Plan. And now you can see the blending of the existing property in white and light gray with the proposed improvement in black, red, and a highlighted yellow area. So building A on the right east side of the project is our first phase along with 110 surface parking spaces that will be built for the permanent project around that building. As well as the two roadway, private road improvements on the left and the and the center and the stormwater management basin in the bottom right. Highlighted in yellow is existing parking from around the existing office building there today. And specifically highlighted in yellow is 303 existing spaces that we call interim surface parking. And when you add those 303 to the 110 permanent, it provides 413 spaces that are needed to be compliant with the parking regulations for a completed, fully occupied building A. And you'll you'll understand these the need for this phasing as we go on to the next drawing. I also wanted to to throw some statistics out on this exhibit. The footprint of building A is approximately 71,922 square feet. It'll be a four story building with 262 residential units. 110 permanent parking spaces and the 303 interim spaces. There will also be nine Americans with Disabilities Act parking spaces provided during this phase. The Dryden Way connection shown in red will be constructed as this phase is concluding. And prior to any building permits being issued in the future phase two. Pedestrian access from Phase One Temporary Parking Area in yellow to building A will be by walking through the paved parking lot. That exists today, similar to walking through any office or retail shopping center parking lot as it is laid out on the draw. Next exhibit is titled or is numbered A-13 entitled Phase Two A Interim Site Plan. Phase two is going to begin with the parking garage shown in blue in the middle of our total building B, future building B. And the reason for this is so we we construct the first three levels in the parking garage, we will gain 368 parking spaces. Added to the 110 will give us 478 now, which will be more than enough to support all of the residents in building A. While we continue construction in phase two, which is going to include. Construction over this original yellow interim parking. We no longer need the interim parking. Once this first three levels of building garage are are constructed. Go to the next slide.
This is IT. I need to interrupt for a second.
Yes.
Okay, there is an individual that I keep muting and they keep on the other. The reason I'm doing is the feedback.
Sounds like it stopped.
Yeah, I don't know if it would happen if Tom Mountain would mute while Eric's talking and then. I'm mute and you need to jump in.
Okay, so our next exhibit is A-14 titled Phase Two A Complete Site Plan. And now you can see around that parking garage, we've completed the construction of the entire building B area. And in a in a way that parking was provided separate from the construction activities for those residents in building A. So this is again the explanation of the sequencing of construction. And at this stage, as building B is entirely completed, the the upper levels of the parking garage are now completed as well. We now have 152 surface parking spaces, 868 garage spaces for a total of 1,020. At this stage of the project, that's more than we need, but we have to build the garage complete. So we only needed 919, but those extra spaces will be needed as we complete the the rest of the project. Going to move to the next exhibit. A dash, this exhibit is is numbered A-15 titled Phase Two B Site Plan. Sorry, can I interrupt real quick, Mr. Schwartz? My numbers aren't matching up on your on your exhibits here. I have. What seems to be Cs labeled for the what you're showing. Yeah, I'm sorry. So you are looking at the actual submitted signed and sealed drawings that were part of the application? Are they the same drawings though? They're not identical because what we've done is we've added certain notes here specifically for presentation. The base drawing I'm showing you is consistent with the improvements on the submitted plans. But these particular, you know, views are a little bit different for the sake of presentation. I appreciate that. So make sure I didn't have the wrong copies. Thank you for that. Okay. Again, exhibit A-15 titled Phase Two B Site Plan. Phase two B improvements include the construction of the final building C on the top, 33,585 square feet. It's a one story retail restaurant building labeled as building C. And the final 57 permanent parking spaces along that upper perimeter of the project will now be complete. The project's permanent parking count is now 1,077 spaces. Including 209 outdoor surface spaces and 868 inside the garage. There will be a total of 33 handicap spaces. ADA spaces of which 18 will be in the garage and 15 will be on the surface, spread out amongst all three different buildings. The 1,077 parking space count exceeds the shared parking demand study requirements of 1,012 spaces. Pedestrian barrier fencing will be installed separating the completed phase one, that building A in the beginning. And then and the interim parking to go with it as we proceed through the construction of the phase two. This keeps the construction zone separated from any pedestrian activity. Both of the existing buildings on the site will be demolished at the beginning of phase one. So once residents moved into building A and we move on to construction and building B, the only remaining demolition activity. Would be a surface and subsurface items in those areas where the interim parking. Was being used and had not been able to be demolished at that point. In the center of the project between buildings B and C is a pedestrian friendly central plaza nicknamed the Woonerf. Which you will hear more about from some of the other consultants' presentations. But one thing to note about it is its geometric configuration provides a natural traffic calming. And discourages a high volume vehicular use through that that curved road in the middle. And the reason for that is because again, it's a central plaza that can be used for a lot of public activity, dining and and pedestrian. Activity and interaction. And with the majority of the parking being in the garage and out and around the perimeter, again, there should be a minimized. Interaction of vehicles and pedestrians, although it is perfectly situated and safe for both vehicles and pedestrians. To cross and through that area. A few other points to make regarding some of the comments from the township's professionals while I'm on this slide. Our short term loading areas and ride sharing and food delivery service. There's a rideshare drop off pickup zone. That will support two to three vehicles provided in the front of the building A lobby. And that's also right at the end of the central plaza of Woonerf, so it's kind of in the center core of the project with fairly easy access from any of the three buildings. We also have a an additional service parking space on the top right side of building A. Kind of the backside of building A for extra deliveries could be Amazon type delivery drop offs and and the like. Electric vehicle charging stations, there will be 18 electric vehicle charging stations located in the parking garage. When it is completed as part of that that phase of construction. 12 will be on the upper floors dedicated for residents between both building A and building B. And then there will be six more on the lower levels, which is where the retail and restaurant non residents will come to the project and be able to use. The applicant is planning to add even more electric vehicle charging stations as the future demand grows and is warranted. The architect will speak more during his presentation about the function of those electric vehicle charging stations in the garage. With regard to ADA accessibility, again, the open central plaza Woonerf area has been designed with grading. Such that the entire area is under 2% slopes, making the plaza very ADA friendly. We're also utilizing storm drainage grates with very small ADA friendly openings. And there are two ADA parking spaces located right in the middle of that curved road in the middle. Central Plaza giving again even even greater right here where my hand is on the screen ADA accessibility. There. On the left side of the project and I'll show better on a later exhibit in color, but there is one trash compactor. Where my hand is on the left side of building B. All other are this compactor will be used for the retail and restaurant. Tenants in buildings B and C, but also in buildings A, B, and C, there will be internal maintenance rooms where recycling and solid waste will be stored. Until it is wheeled out for the private hauler, when when the private hauler shows up to make collection. Delta Dental property on the left, known as Lot 1.1. Our project proposes some improvements on that property. First of all, our project's property line runs right down the center of West District Drive on the left side between the two lots. So we'll be improving that road from the edge of Route 10 all the way to the bottom. Of the T intersection here. And so half of those improvements are on our property, half of those improvements are on the Delta Dental property. And we are in active communication with Delta Dental for the necessary easements to be in place to to make those improvements. Further to the left up here, again, where my hand is, is a pedestrian ramp that is located so that the occupants or not occupants, but the employees working in the Delta Dental building. Can come over to the restaurants and the retail and interact with our project in an efficient, safe manner. There's handicap striping in their parking lot here that pedestrians can walk straight across and enter our ramp that brings them over to our site. um our ramp that brings them over to our site. I say it's a ramp because the Delta Dental site is at a higher elevation, about six to eight feet higher or so than the road. So they can enter this ramp um and then have a sidewalk to bring them down to the south and then a crosswalk uh to cross over onto the sidewalks on our side of the project and enter in. Um there will be some additional signage that is not on the draw on the plans yet as a um uh one of the township engineers comment or consulting engineers comments were about um control of that mid block crosswalk. So we're going to add some additional signage there. So the vehicles know that there is a crosswalk. Um I think we can go to the next exhibit. My apologies for the slowness that coming up. There we go. This exhibit is A dash sixteen titled Major Subdivision. Uh the subject property in the Parcipony portion uh will be subdivided into three lots. There are two today. And we will reconfigure those into lots one point oh four, one point oh five, and one point oh six uh to go with each of the three buildings A, B, and C, and this will help the owners of the project manage the buildings themselves. And these numbering have been reviewed and are uh consistent with the Township Tax Assessor's Review Letter. Okay. Next exhibit is A dash seventeen titled Trash Truck Movements. As you can see in red, this is a colorized version of of a drawing that was in the in the overall application site plan package. Uh the red movements are intended to show uh very functional access for trash and recycling trucks to make their way all around the project site. And as I mentioned before about the trash compactor, if you did not see it on that earlier exhibit, it is shown on the left in green. Um again, right here where my hand is shown, and that is the only outdoor uh uh trash uh storage area. And we intend to provide screen. We we've positioned it specifically back here behind the frontage of building B to where there is very little visibility from the public plaza and the areas of where the restaurants and the retail are going to be and and where the public is generally going to be. There was a review comment uh requesting whether or not there would be screening. Uh we are open to providing uh offense type screening around the compactor pad as well. And the next exhibit is is number A dash eighteen titled Fire Truck Movements. We have uh the statistics and dimensions of the township's fire tr- a Parcipony Township uh fire truck shown in the top of the screen, and we modeled this with auto turn software uh to show that the fire truck can make all the movements around all the various turns in the project and gain access to all sides of each building. And this has been reviewed by uh Chief Petito as well from Fire Association District Six, and he had no comments on the actual movements. He did provide us comments on areas of where he wanted fire lane striping and signage, and we will provide those uh on the final plans uh following uh following the planning board hearings or compliance. Next exhibit is a colorized version of our overall grading and drainage plan that's in the package uh in the in the application. And again, as the buildings are built in phases, so are the site improvements. So to to show and explain this again in in phase one, uh well, I should start with a description of the overall grading of the site. Um the sites grade essentially from the northwest up by Route ten down to the southeast where the stormwater management basin is. This is where the existing basin is on the property, and we are we are making it more or less probably twice the size of this as it is. The original basin dates back to uh you know, pre two thousand, and this stormwater management basin is designed to meet the New Jersey DEP uh stormwater design rules uh and includes uh discharge reductions uh in the two, the ten, the one hundred year storm event, reducing the peak flow rates that would be discharged to Malaparatus Brook by fifty, seventy five, and eighty percent respectively uh of the predevelopment conditions. Uh the basin also provides water quality treatment by removing sixty percent of the total suspended solids for the new vehicular paved areas throughout the entire project, both on the Parcipony portion as well as in the Hanover portion. The basin discharges into Malaparatus Brook uh in Hanover, located in south and east where there are some blue arrows showing the direction of flow of the stream. Um as far as the drainage improvements, uh pipes and conveyance system, that's what's shown in red, uh blue and green on this on this on the exhibit as well as black. So the red pipes are are to be installed in phase one with the building A and as well as some of the other uh areas that we we modified. So we need to pick up the drainage to get that in in the early phase. Um phase one B is in black and shows some drainage improvements for the drydenway ramp connection that will also be managed by the Stormwater Basin. And then in phase, while as we build building B in phase two, A, uh we will have the blue pipes added in. And finally, the building C has a few green pipes which are predominantly roof drains coming off of building C, and then after it is built and tied into the project. Finally, in magenta is the Hanover phase, which will be done independently uh when the Hanover phases is constructed. Um I have a few other notes to go through uh related items and from some of the township professionals' comments. Specifically, um retaining walls and fences uh in Parcipony, there will be two retaining walls proposed for that Delta Dental pedestrian ramp over here on the left side. Right? Again, we have to traverse a roughly six foot uh drop in grade. So we have a ramp which is designed at four percent to meet ADA requirements. And in order to do that, in what today is a landscape, a grass berm, we need a wall on both sides of it to allow that transition of grade coming down. Uh the wall, the maximum wall height is six feet just at the very uh bottom of it, and the rest of it is all you know, tapers down to to near near zero at the upper level. Um there will be forty two inch high fence uh along the top of both walls. And the fencing and retaining wall construction here will comply with the township's ordinances two twenty five dash sixty one for retaining walls as well as four thirty dash eleven fences and walls. Another retaining wall is proposed on the west side of building B. If you can see where my where the hand is on the screen. Uh this retaining wall separates the West District Drive at an upper elevation and the parking on the side of building B at a lower elevation. So when you're on West District Drive, you will not see the wall. You only see the wall when you're down um in the parking area on the immediate west side of building B. Um this retaining wall is has a maximum height of seven point eight feet, which exceeds the maximum allowed height of six feet in ordinance number two twenty five dash sixty one. Uh the wall could not be tiered uh per the ordinance requirement when you exceed six feet due to the overall limitations related to the topographic connections around the perimeter of project. While maintaining a pedestrian friendly s- um slope changes throughout the site on the internal part of the project, uh but also in order to still have the room to provide a landscape strip along the side of West District Drive separating uh that from the project. Um if we had a tiered wall set back three feet for the bench in the middle of it, plus the dimensions of the the wall itself, uh the the five feet that was remaining for trees and landscaping along West District Drive would be removed. Therefore, we we request relief um on this uh requirement for the retaining wall to be allowed as shown on the drawings. Final engineering design drawings uh are in in progress by the projects to a technical engineer, and those will be submitted to the township consulting uh engineers for uh review and approval. The the retaining walls um that I'm talking about here, both on the Delta Dental side as well as on the project side by building B, will be constructed simultaneous with the reconstruction of West District Drive. So uh there was a a comment from the township um consulting engineer about whether or not there was concern for undermining of the road when you build the retaining wall, and the answer is no, the road will be out of service, and it will be done simultaneously. Again, the walls as well as the adjustments in the grade of that West District Drive. We we expect no um issues there. Finally, related to grading and drainage, uh we have an application in for a major soil movement permit uh that's been submitted with the application and reviewed by the township engineer. There will be an estimated thirty six thousand three hundred and forty cubic yards of onsite earth movement to make this project uh with grades as we've described, the pedestrian friendly environment. Any trucks needed uh for materials will utilize Route ten and Route two eighty seven. Um however, much of the earth movement, we've designed this to be as close as possible to a balanced earthwork project, meaning that we shouldn't need to import very much or export very much material. Uh so again, mu- much of the earth movement will be from onsite materials, including reuse of crushed concrete from the existing buildings to fill in the existing underground basements that are in those buildings. Um in general, uh as I understand it, the purpose of the soil movement ordinance is to prevent uncontrolled earth movement, uh which could then have detrimental effects effects on other properties or natural resources. We have a very detailed grading design uh and engineered erosion control plans that have been reviewed and approved by um the Morse County Soil Conservation District and and this will help manage the work, so there will be no harm during the earthwork operations to other properties or natural resources. Um the design does aim to closely balance the earthwork and and so again, there should be minimum uh trucking of of bulk earth on and off of the project. And the underground storm drainage pipes that are shown in the various colors on this exhibit are designed to convey the twenty five year storm event uh to the stormwater management basin. There's also a small groundwater recharge basin in the in the phase one A, uh sorry, the phase one area south of building B uh to meet the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection requirements. And last thing I'll say about drainage is in these two amenity courtyards of building A as well as the one in building B, you'll see two pipes extending through the building to get out, right? These are these are air courtyard areas that are open to the sky. Um you'll see much more detail on the design of those courtyards by the other consultants. Um but we want it to be uh extra secure, I'll call it, uh from a storm drainage point of view. Each of these pipes, uh the current regulations basically would be to design the pipe to take the twenty five year event out. Um and anything above that, you would have surface ponding. Since these are in the middle of buildings, we don't want that to happen hardly ever. So uh we've designed each of those pipes to convey the one hundred year storm event, and then we provided two of them. So instead of one pipe for a twenty five year, we've got two pipes that will each do a hundred year storm event in a catastrophic situation. If one of the pipes were to clog or or fail for some reason, we have a backup. I'm going to move to the next exhibit. And so exhibit A dash twenty is our overall utility plan. Um so the water systems that we'll be installing, potable water is shown in blue, gravity sewer in red, green is a force main from our pump station, and the transformers up along Route ten that were mentioned earlier for a waiver to be in the buffer area are shown in magenta. Um please note uh also that water and sewer services for this project and property are not provided by the Township of Parcipony, Troy Hills, but instead, the water is supplied by Southeast Morris County Municipal Utility uh Municipal uh Utility Authority, and they have already reviewed the and approved the proposed water main extension as has the New Jersey DEP. And the Hanover Sewage Authority is the jurisdiction for this property uh for sewage uh treatment. So the water main, today, the the property is serviced by water main along from Johnson Road along that common drive between the the three different properties. Well, the improvement we're going to have here, as you see on the top left, looks like it goes off the sheet. Well, it does, because it's going to extend across the front of the Delta Dental property and tie into a new main that the Octagon Building has built on its frontage. So what we end up with is a looped water main with two points of service from Johnson Road. And uh and and so you you end up with a complete uh U-shaped loop then. Interiorly on the, as far as uh the water line goes, we also have eleven fire hydrants. Uh Chief Petito reviewed those as well and made some comments to to move them slightly left and right or north and south, uh or east and west, I should say, and we're going to uh accommodate his requests on that with the final set of plans. Excuse me one second. Okay, um onto excuse me, um to sewer shown in red. So the gra- the red gravity sewer pipes will connect each building to the pump station shown on the right side of building A. That's the east side facing the drydenway jug handle. Coming out of that pump station then is the green force main that will run uh through Hanover uh down Dryden Way along Route ten onto Riverdale Avenue and tie into an existing manhole. We've closely coordinated uh this with the Hanover Sewage Authority and uh our reviews for the Treatment Works approval that we will need to submit to the D, New Jersey DEP are um are are more or less almost complete. We're we're almost at the finish line with uh uh technical issues, but the design should be as we show. Uh also, comments from the township engineers I wanted to address are that the pump station and force main are designed for the project's full build density. Uh but as various stages of the project come online, building A and then eventually building B and C, um the pump station can be modified just by changing the controls and the floats um inside to handle those lower flows earlier on. Uh the applicant will be owner and operator of the onsite collection system and the pump station. The force main in green will be owned and uh maintained by the Hanover Sewage Authority. The next exhibit titled or numbered A dash twenty one titled Lighting Plan is essentially a colorized version of the site plan showing where all of the site lights are proposed on the project and uh and what height those lights are positioned at. Total project will have eighty one LED site lights. And they're broken up in the in the phases naturally as we progress through the project. Most of the fixtures are pole mounted. There are eight fixtures that are wall mounted due to the key locations, and those are noted as D, J, and K. Um and those are essentially in a corridor uh in the middle of building B, which is a pedestrian internal corridor. And then around the three sides of uh building B, there are were places where we needed a a wall mounted fixture which are shown in letter K. The details of the fixture are provided on the last sheet of the site plan set. And uh fixtures A and D shown on this plan are uh or or proposed as a Sternberg lighting uh large chateau model. Uh the other lights on the project are uh known as a Lithonia lighting wall mounted fixtures and Lithonia lighting uh D series pole mounted fixtures which are uh uh black in color and um then types A, J, and K, which are shown in the gold color, more or less in the middle of the project, are proposed to be mounted at a sixteen foot um height and are shown in uh again, shown in gold color. Uh the type D, there's only one of them right in the middle of the project that's inside an interior corridor. It's a decorative fixture and it's wall mounted because it's indoors that connects the corridor that connects It's a decorative fixture and it's wall mounted because it's indoors that connects the corridor that connects the parking garage and and some other areas in building B to go out into the central plaza. Then types J and K are the Lithonia lighting wall mounted fixtures. And the type B and C right, which are essentially in magenta and around the entire perimeter of the project really serve the vehicul- the major vehicular areas where the park, most of the parking is as well as the major drive aisle, sub west and south district drive. Those fixtures are proposed at twenty two feet high and again, are that same Lithonia lighting, so we have a a consistent lighting package around the project. Type F is proposed to be mounted twenty feet high, that's in the bottom left in a section of parking that will serve the shared parking between Delta Dental and the future hotel and then the E F. I'm sorry, E, G, H and I shown in red are in Hanover for that proposed hotel and are fifteen feet high, which is what the limit of the Hanover code allows. Since the Hanover site is is fairly separated from the main Parsippany site, we believe that the 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 lower pole height in Hanover is not of conflict and and should serve the overall project well. The higher light poles that we have again, meet the code requirements of Parsippany. And it's it's more appropriate for them to be higher because they provide for fewer conflicts. If we had shorter poles, we would need more of them closer together. And you would have more and more conflicts with places where we have proposed landscaping or features around the the Parsippany portion. The design photometrics fall within all the required minimum and maximum limits as written on the compliance chart of that is included on sheet L L one zero one dash zero 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 in the site plan drawing set. Specifically, the minimum foot candle level for parking and drive aisles is proposed at zero point six where zero point five foot candles is the minimum recommended by the township code. The average to minimum and max to minimum ratios are also designed for the parking and drive aisles to be under the allowable recommended ratios in the code. So we are compliant on those elements. The next exhibit is my final exhibit. As it comes up. Okay, so this this exhibit is A dash twenty two titled N J D E P permitting plan. We applied for last year and were and received a permit from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Land Use Regulation Division. It's a multi-permit application. We received approval on July thirteenth, twenty twenty for the following six permits or approvals that are related to the overall redevelopment of the site. Number one is an individual flood hazard area permit for minor work in the flood hazard area of Malaport Malaportus Brook. That includes improvements to two existing stormwater outfalls and the installation of a new offsites sewer force main in Hanover down on Ridge Dale Avenue, which will include directional drilling to go underneath the existing culvert on Ridge Dale Avenue of Malaportus Brook. That's shown in the highlighted lower right corner, blow up view in Ridge Dale Avenue. There's also a freshwater wetlands general permit G P two for underground utility lines, a point zero six acre temporary disturbance in a wetland transition area, which is essentially the lawn area along the side of the dried in way jug handle of where we'll have that sewer force main installed. We also have a freshwater wetlands general permit ten A for very minor road crossing of point one five acres of disturbance to wetland areas for the construction of the dried and way extension and new roundabout leading onto the site there. And that's shown in the the green triangle shows specifically the point zero five acres of wetland encroachment for that that New Jersey D O T road improvement. And then the black hatched area and orange hatched area show the impacts to the transition area adjacent to that wetland. All associated with building the D O T ramp connection. And we have a transition area waiver for redevelopment, which is reconfiguration of the existing stormwater basin that's shown in the bottom view with a little bit of red crosshatch on it. So that's just a rework of the where the buffer from the wetlands behind the site come in and actually encroach into the stormwater management basin. And we'll be regrading that basin there. And then finally, a flood hazard area verification. So we did a flood study on the Malaportus Brook because there was no existing flood study performed on this portion of the Brook. So we analyzed it and that was part of our New Jersey D E P application submission. And it helps establish what the hundred year flood line or flood hazard area limit would be, which is shown in the two blue lines. And as you can see, all of the improvements for the project are are north of those those blue lines. So we're not building anything in the hundred year flood hazard area. The New Jersey D E P permit is valid for five years. And we recently in March of twenty twenty one applied for and received a minor modification to the permit, which was essentially an update of of a couple of the stamped drawings to show the current building layout as we proposed in this site plan application. What we had originally gotten last summer was just slightly different on the configuration of the project. All of the impacts were are were were no different, which is why it was a minor modification to that permit. In closing, I would say we agree to comply with the other engineering and township review and planning department professional comments, except as maybe another witness that comes up explains otherwise. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions from the board this time?
First, I'd like to turn it over to any of our town professionals, Mr. Cagiano. Do you have any questions?
Um, yes, um, I just wanted to go through a few, a few. He testified on many, many of the comments that we had and he addressed many of the comments in particular that that we brought up. But just to clarify, I guess first off, the access to the site, if you're traveling westbound on Route ten would be from where, Eric?
Okay, let me, I'm gonna go back. There with me on the exhibits. So this, whoop, a little too far. How about this exhibit probably so? If you're traveling westbound on Route ten, that was the question, I believe.
Yeah.
And so the traveling westbound, that would be on the exhibit shown from right to left on the upper side of the road. One, you would be able to get off here on the north side of Route ten and take the jug handle on the north side around underneath Route ten. And then you'll proceed as my hand is going here onto the red improvements we have. There was a small roundabout here and then you come into the project site and you can make a right up into the middle of the project. We will also have testimony later by our traffic engineer who can explain, I mean, he'll probably be better than me when it comes to the global traffic related matters, but in essence, that's how that access would work.
All right, thank you. And then on phasing, the dried in way D O T improvements are all part of phase one. Those, my question is, would those improvements in red on this exhibit A eleven be need to be completed prior to access and use of this site? Any any C O's? It's intended that this, is it intended that this access from dried and way be complete prior to any C O's or any use of the the first building?
So to to and I expect somebody on our team here, correct me if I'm just wrong, but as I understand it, for the agreement with the township for this project, the redevelopment agreement, building A can be completed. Everything shown in green can be completed without D O T connection to dried and way being complete and open for use. Building A can be put into operation. We cannot fill a building permit for building B or C the phase two of the project as defined in the agreement until the dried and way showing red connection has been completed and and open for use.
This is Tom, that that's correct. That's what we developed, we're going to state that. I will have the traffic engineer totally end of our presentation. I'll go through this in more detail, but what Mr. Schwartz has said is what.
Okay, and then on the phasing as well, if you go to, I don't know if it's exhibit, the one for phase one. Yeah, that exhibit A twelve. I had mentioned and we had a comment on this, we had some concerns about this. The area shown in yellow, the three hundred and three interim parking spaces, particularly the ones on the west side are considerably far distant from building A. The further spots could be, you know, six, seven hundred feet of a walk through the parking lot. We we continue to recommend a some kind of temporary sidewalk or walkway. So these residents aren't walking several hundred feet, five, six, seven hundred feet to building A in the parking lot.
Okay, I I think we have some opportunity there. In the lower left of the drawing, there is sidewalk that surrounds the existing office building that is here today. And it and it basically abuts the edge of the yellow in this, in this L-shaped pattern. So I believe we probably have that and we can definitely look at that closer and work with your office to make sure that it's that it'll that it'll be in place on the final plans again. Okay, and so I I think that we're probably pretty well positioned to provide that. You'd have all the way to here and then all the way across the top right on that edge of perimeter, which we can still be far from any construction in the next phase.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I just want to get that out. And then I I recall you said you commented on the rideshare and the Ubers and the like Amazon type parcel deliveries would be a location is identified at building A. Is that intended to serve building B as well? Is that what I heard or I misunderstood?
Yes, so let me just go forward a little here. And to our completed project. So again, right here where where my hand is shown. I can pull it around a little bit. That's a a rideshare space here and we thought that it was centrally located enough that it could service both buildings. What's missing on this drawing and we will have it on the final land, the final site plans is the crosswalks that will cross over both here and more or less about here into the edges of that. You know, the the top and bottom of that rideshare area. So pedestrians can go from buildings B and C over to it with a protect protect, yeah, excuse me, protected crosswalk.
And and where is the main entrance or lobby that the that they for building B located?
So building B has a number of functions, but for the residents, the core lobby area is 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 through here. Again, this will be explained probably a lot better by the by the architect, but should be more or less on that upper middle portion of building B into the the residential area.
Okay. And then you did comment on the retaining wall height in excess of of the six feet along the West District Drive and you did ask for relief. I just wanted to put it on the record. I believe you may need relief for from the zoning code, section four thirty eleven, fences and walls and the side and rear yards shall be maximum six feet. So just just for, I think we we cite it ordinance two twenty five sixty one, but I believe four thirty eleven also would apply if you were, if you go to the wall height above the six feet. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. And if Mr. Vate agrees, that would be the the release should be sought for that one as well, four thirty dash eleven for fences and walls. Trash draining, you could you touched on the the wall construction, you touched on the mid block crosswalks. You now, you you stated that the D your D E P freshwater wetlands and flood hazard area permits were received. Were those applications reviewed for stormwater management as well?
Yes, yes, included a complete stormwater management review by the New Jersey D E P yesterday.
Okay, and they approved the the stormwater and and the permits and the proposed improvements. Is that correct?
Yes.
I have a few more questions, but I don't think there are. You had agreed to address our comments. I don't know that there was anything else of major. Oh, bike racks. I I could you point out for the board where the bike racks, you mentioned E V charging stations, but could you show for the board where the bike racks are proposed?
If it would be okay, I'd like to defer that to another witness. The when the landscape architect proposes, they're going to show a lot more detail of the amenities and that would include the bike racks as well.
Okay, that's not a problem. And I and this is more for housekeeping for the plans. But I know you did comment on the storm drainage within the amenity courtyards and that they're sized with some redundancy. We noted that there were, the pipes were not shown or any reference to pipes shown on the architectural drawings. And again, this is more of a housekeeping item. But we're concerned that when the architectural drawings go to final design of that that type of major component may get missed during the design. So we would request as a condition of approval that the these basic architectural drawings be updated at least to note in some way that accommodations must be made for storm pipes running from these courtyards out through the building. So so there's there's no conflicts with other building M E P or structural that may get oversight. And then at the end of the day, there's 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 an oversight and an issue. So we're just asking that that the architectural plan, I know that's not your testimony, but I just wanted to get it on the record that I think at this point, the architectural plan should show some indication of those storm pipes on there. If there is no objection to that.
Understood. I mean, I I won't object and I I presume the architect won't object, but I don't want to speak for him. So perhaps he can state that.
Okay, well, I'll bring it up again later.
Okay, very good. He was he was going to be our next presenter after I'm concluded. I will, I'll tell you one other thing. You also had comments on those interior courtyards and conflict with with or not conflict, but the intricate detailed drainage within that courtyard and we will still work with the landscape architect to fine tune where each yard drain trench drain smaller, very localized drainage feature will go and then get that tied into the larger connection point that we provided from an engineering perspective. So that was some detail that at at time of publication wasn't available yet. And we'll get that in on the final set.
All right, thank you. That's that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Ms. Vate, anything to add?
Yeah, I'm just got a few on the phasing. Can you give a sense of the timing and duration of the phases? I I think previously, whenever we've discussed the overall project, you had envisioned if if you get approvals this spring, early summer, you might even be able to start demo this summer. And can you just give a sense of when when that might start and then how long each phase anticipated?
So I I don't think that's one for for me to answer. Tom, I think, I don't know, I mean, I'm thinking that's better from the applicant. Not a specific technical engineering question and and I'm not, I don't want to, I don't want to misstate it.
Understood. Mark, can you hear me? Could you answer that question?
Sure. Hi, Susan.
Hey, Mark.
We're looking at starting demolition later this year and hoping to go vertical early next year. We think that the B building is a twenty-four month construction window, at which point we also anticipate getting a pretty darn close to a DOT approval by the end of the year, which would permit us to start that to tie into the end of the construction of the the B building. And then we're looking to start the rest of the project just as soon as we get the NJ DOT portion open. There's going to be a slight delay there since we can't get our building permit until the connector is open. But once we start connection on that portion, it'll be another twenty-four months or so for that phase. So if
Mark, I think you said B. I'm not sure if you meant to say A.
I'm sorry, A. Yes, it's it used to be the B building. My apologies.
Initial construction of building A on the right side.
Right, it's helpful. I assume we're not going to get through it tonight. I'm happy to to give you a more formalized put together more formalized schedule if that's appropriate the next time we we see you.
Sure, that's helpful. Thank you. Eric, you touched on the subdivision, and I think you indicated that the the need for the subdivision is driven by the, you know, it makes it easier to operate the individual buildings. And I just wonder if you could speak a little bit more about that, because I understood that this whole site would be one owner and operator. Is there a potential for, you know, these parcels to sort of be split off and sold to different parties?
I can so. Better to answer that is.
Is that is that better for Mark as well?
Yeah, I think so.
Go ahead.
So and unfortunately, not the the finance person on our team, but I believe these are probably going to be financed in different tranches. So it's it's really a financing issue as to where the capital stacks are placed with each construction component. So it does provide flexibility if we wanted to sell off the retail pad at a later date. As I understand, any sales would have to be approved by by parsonny at some point. But really, to in order to get this financed, we we need the separate parcels.
Okay, thank you. Great. All right, I got a lot of notes here. This is one I think you can answer, Eric.
Okay.
You had spoken about the garage being constructed, the first three levels that could be used, and then the remaining levels would be constructed later. I'm guessing that means the garage can be used while it's under construction. Can you talk about a little bit more detail on that?
Oh, boy. I think that's going to be better for the architect, but but just real briefly, I will say, right, what's shown on the screen again, as we said here, as we begin phase two, we start with the garage. It is, I think it has seven levels total in the garage for the eight hundred and sixty-eight spaces. So we build the first three levels, and they can now be accessed and used by those residents of building A, while construction of the next levels continues above those, as well as, right, as we advance then to the next phase, that flips right and completes the entire building B simultaneously. Those upper levels of the garage would continue as far as, you know, the true building architectural component there, I'd really have to defer to the architect to explain probably.
Okay, so we'll hold that. The stormwater basin, which is in phase one, but it's in Hanover. It's part of this application. Is it also a part of the Hanover application? But imagine that they would have to approve it as well.
Yes, yes, it is. And as Mr. Malman said in the beginning, that application's been submitted and is under review in Hanover now. So yes.
So presumably, it won't lag parson things by too much.
We're, yes, we realize we need both sides, and we're expecting that to come along soon.
All right, just making sure I've got them all. I think that's it for engineering.
Okay. In that case, I'll open up to members of the board who have any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
A question for Mr. Schwartz, and perhaps the traffic engineer will relate to this later on. Regarding the curved drive through between buildings C and B, it is shown as being one way, let's say, east to west, as we look at the plot. Would it be more advantageous if it were the opposite way, one way eastbound, so that emergency equipment or even a tenant coming in to go to the garage would have easier access than to go all the way around the top or the bottom?
Right. Okay, thank you for that question. We, when we envisioned the project a few years ago, and this began, that was considered to have it go west to east originally. But there's a couple of reasons why we don't want it to do that. One of them is as as traffic vehicles enter on Route ten eastbound, and they enter onto South District Drive and come down, we're actually going to have a raised island in here that does not allow those vehicles to make a turn in, because we don't want that to be a backup queue of cars, you know, waiting to make a left turn in backing up on the Route ten. So the focus with the with the project from a traffic planning point of view and the New Jersey DOT back to the beginning was always to bring traffic in and then down across the bottom and then up into what we really consider the major entrance up into the middle of the project. And then there you do get quick access to the garage. There are two points. You can come in on the south side of the garage into the lowest levels. Or if you're on this, the central road, there's a second entrance to the garage here at on a different level. From an emergency vehicle point of view, we did make that island as mountable curb. So fire truck, police vehicles, they can all jump right over it. And really, once you get past the island, it stops and it becomes striped. But again, emergency vehicles could get over it, and they could come right into here. And and again, one of the elements of it, if you recall, we want this to be a pedestrian-friendly environment, and we really want to minimize the traffic, which is part of the reason of why it's one way. We don't want it to be a major vehicular use. And we think that with the parking garage providing the majority of the spaces, the access from both off of Route ten from the western heading eastbound direction, as well as the other direction coming from the Dryden Way ramp, are really going to have quicker access to the garage on the bottom there.
As long as emergency equipment still has access in the opposite direction, I see no problem.
Yes, there should be no problem for a fire truck or police to to come in there and go against the one way.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other members with questions?
Just a quick question, if I may.
Go ahead, Councilman.
The ramp coming down from Delta Dental.
Yes.
And you got the crosswalk going across. It looks like it leaves you at the trash compactor.
Okay, so I've got a blow up on the screen for anybody who's watching now. And right, so again, you'll you'll the pedestrians will be making their way this direction, right? And then they can come down the ramp. And they have a cross, and then they continue with sidewalk here back.
Okay.
That's all sidewalk, and then that gets us to here, and we're going to be adding a crosswalk on the plan here to bring them into the the full pedestrian plaza area.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. I also have a question that's that's kind of related to the flow of traffic. So if you want to defer to your traffic, that's appropriate also. But more in terms of the safety for the crossings. I was wondering if you you considered or would continue to consider more elevated crossings, because with the number of units here with the retail and the and the restaurants, it seems like you will have an awful large amount of traffic. It might be better to separate the pedestrians from the traffic a little bit more by creating elevated crossings.
Right. So there will be a little bit of that, and you're going to hear about it from the architect. It doesn't show on this drawing I have up right now, but if I can just make a quick little rough, right about here is a an overpass that I believe is on the third level, and the architect will correct me if I'm wrong. So that allows the residents that park in the parking garage to go over to building A on elevated, you know, a bridge. Bridge over, so they don't have to. And again, if you, as I mentioned, the lower levels of the parking garage are intended for the retail and restaurant customers, and they will come out from the garage up through the middle here and and enter onto the plaza. And so they're doing that without any vehicular interaction. The upper levels of the parking garage then connect into the residential sections of building B, as well as have that bridge over to building A. And, you know, if we think about the eight hundred and sixty-eight parking spaces is is around eighty percent of the total. That's a pretty high percentage that we're, we think we're keeping away from that pedestrian interaction. And then we do have sidewalks on both sides, or it's just the all sides of the buildings to to allow, you know, behind curb pedestrian movement as well.
All right, maybe that'll become more apparent then as as we see the rest of the testimony. I also, I I just questioned the reason for the one-way traffic through the plaza at all. I would assume you could make it available to emergency vehicles and equipment, even if it were a completely pedestrian pathway. So why have vehicles going through there at all?
Yep. I think it's, this is this is getting beyond the the technical side, and it's a little more.
Sorry about that.
No, 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 not at all. But and again, I think you are going to hear about, especially with landscape architect, this is a big part of his presentation, the nature of the central plaza and why you do have some interaction with vehicles. Right off the bat, some people, when things are not busy, may be inclined to pull right up in here and and be right in front of the burger joint or or whatever. You know, the restaurant is that's positioned there, or a quick access to the retail shop rather than go into the parking garage maybe on a nice day. But I I.
Yeah, I can answer that or attempt to to answer it. What we're trying to create here is is not usual for a suburban market and to attract the the quality of retailers and restaurants we're looking to attract. Frankly, they think we're crazy if they're if they weren't fronting on the street with some parking spots on it, even though we fully intend to close that street down on weekends to open it up for fully pedestrian activity. So it's it's really, it's a it kind of speaks to what we're trying to accomplish here and and trying to get the the quality of retailers. Because we're trying to get the best of both worlds. We want to that we're we find a great landscape great to pedestrian and the vehicular traffic, as you'll see through the architect and landscape architect's presentation. But it's critical that we have this vehicular access through with some parking spots. It's really just a handful of parking spots through there, but it's important to get the commitments we're looking to.
Okay. I just have one other question regarding package deliveries service. So how, where are you planning on allowing for a UPS or the current Amazon-sized vans to gain access to to your tenants?
Right, so on the well, this this front area, again, we call it kind of the rideshare, you know, both Uber pickups, also small quick deliveries could be dropped off there when they're the smaller Amazon deliveries. But we also have this dedicated space over here where right on the right side of that building, and there are doors on this side of the building as well for the the residents to come out to this location and and retrieve packages as well. So those are the two main places for the everyday kind of delivery that we would expect. I did not talk about back here behind building B, we've created a additional pull-off loading space, if you will, and we sized this one to be large enough for the biggest truck on the road, the WB sixty-seven. So if you do have tenants with a lot of equipment coming or a lot of goods and a lot of delivery, there is a place for a large full-size tractor trailer to get entirely off of the private road.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I will, and I think Keith, we'll get into a lot more detail with package delivery and how that works with the the residential tenants.
All right, I appreciate that. One last time for the members of the board, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, something came to mind for me.
Go ahead, Bruce.
And it might have been touched on, but I didn't hear it. And wondering, it feels, and it may just be my reading of your of your drawings, but it feels a little tight. And my question pertains to snow removal, particularly for the residents. And how do you propose to handle that? It feels tight, maybe it's not. But that's that's my question. So I don't know if that's Mr. Schwartz or somebody else, but I wanted to put it out there.
Well, I'll I'll start, and if Mark or somebody wants to add to it, there they are, they are vehicular access paths around the entire perimeter, as well as up down the middle in the T shape that any snowplow or 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 front-end loader can come in and collect and grab snow. They can turn around, they can bring it down towards the stormwater management basin and deposit it. I do think there's there's opportunity there for what where to push and put the snow. We also are a little bit higher parked in the final configuration than what we need to be. So if you did have to lose upwards of about fifty or sixty parking spaces just from stockpiling snow until it melted, you would still have enough parking to support the project. That's not what I envisioned to happen. I would envision that it is probably pushed around the perimeter as well as perhaps on big, big events, it could then be picked up and brought down to the stormwater basin and deposited. But this is really kind of overstepping a little bit into operations. But from a engineer's point of view, I believe it functions.
Yeah, I'll add to that quickly, that the snow removal here will be better than any other residential complex around likely, because our retail and restaurant leases will require it and expect a grade A property management job done here. So that's it's really a property management issue that we're used to 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 dealing with and will deal with appropriately. As Eric said, there's there's options with the detention basin or some parking spaces, because once again, there's not going to be a lot of shopping if there's a lot of snow on the road. So I guess just just know that we are laser focused on on the property management aspects of this project, and it'll be driven by the the retail and restaurant tenants to make sure that there's availability to get it around the project and the park safely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, question for me.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Dahish.
Yeah, so could you give me a little more on the E V parking, charging stations? Are they all spread across the campus, or are they just concentrated in one place? I missed that part.
Yes, so right now, the there are eighteen proposed with the initial project, the way we envision it now, and they are all inside the parking garage. There are some on the upper levels that'll be in the dedicated residential section of parking, and then some on the lower levels in the area that is for the public when they come for restaurants or retail use. And the ownership of the project has plans in mind that as demand increases over the years to come, they'll be able to add additional when the demand warrants. Since they are designed inside the parking garage, I expect the architect to to talk about that a little bit more in his testimony.
Okay, so first of all, yeah, congratulations on, you know, thinking through about E V charging stations. That's great. Basically, where I'm going is how does that tie back to the people who have accessibility needs, right? The where the handicap parkings are and if those people need to get their vehicle charged. if those people need to get their vehicle charged, would they be, you know, be sitting in in forty five minutes, an hour in the those charging stations? Or are they, is there a plan to put some of those sta- charging stations where the A D parkings are, some something like that, that kind, yeah?
So since that's inside the garage, again, that's that that specific question, I'm going to defer to the architect, he knows exactly how we cut the the spaces. They do have eighty eight spaces in the garage and we have the EV spaces in the garage. I do not know how they interact with each other. I'll let him explain that.
Okay.
If it's all right to wait till his testimony, I guess.
No, no worries, yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Nick? Thank you, Mr. Schwartz, for your presentation. Can I just clarify a couple of things for me, please? Uh, you mentioned, I think you said, uh, the trash is going to be hauled by a private hauler, so not by a parsonny?
Correct.
Thank you. Do you have an estimated amount of water that's being used for the whole project? When it's all completed?
I I do, I do, because we did the, we did, let me just see if it's in my notes here. Okay, my notes say we have a total project domestic water demand of ninety seven thousand two hundred and thirty gallons per day, but I may be off a little bit there and I'd be happy to provide it separately. It's it's plus or minus a hundred thousand gallons.
That's a good estimate, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, and I thought I heard you say that you're going to finish up phase one and then you're going to do more demo and then not remove that demo and fill it in. Did I hear that right?
No, no, so let me go back. I didn't, in the very beginning, I didn't do a complete talk, I guess, about demolition. So the very beginning of the project, the two buildings that exist today will both be demolished.
Right.
And and then the site, the surface improvements and old utilities, underground utilities, all of that within the phase one construction area, the way we showed on the plans, will get their demolition. There will be other future subsurface or or ground, I should say, you know, curbs that exist. Existing utilities that are no longer going to be in use but are outside the footprint of our building of our phase one area. Those will will wait and so we're not tearing up the portion of the site that's going to be used for the interim parking, for instance. So that stuff will come along later, but when we go to the vertical, the two buildings, they're going to come down before any new construction is done and obviously then before there's any public users or residents on the site, all the vertical.
Okay, thank you. And then one, I think I have one last thing here. So just to to clarify. So building A is going to be a residential only.
Correct.
Building B is residential and retail. And building C and building C is only retail.
That's correct. And and when you use the word retail, we said retail and restaurants.
Okay, just make sure the, no, hasn't there. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I I just wanted to clarify, Nick, the the water source is is from southeast Morris County.
I know, it's still water though. Thank you though.
Okay, uh, it sounds like all the members of our board have asked their questions of the engineering witness. Uh, Mr. Malman, you may bring up your next.
Chairman. Mr. Chairman, it's Andrew Kenji. I just want the one more question just for the board's information. Eric, could you just go go over briefly? I know there's several electrical transformers, a couple in the frontage along Route ten. And then could you just briefly identify or call out the locations of any kind of utility type structures, above ground structures that would be on the site? Transformers that you, water meter, uh, houses, uh, again, the pump station location for, you know, buildings A, B, and wherever else they would be located.
Sure, my pleasure. So we have positioned for electrical transformers as we spoke about on the top of the screen here, I'm trying to highlight in yellow, to along Route ten. Those would be serving building C. Now, building C, just for everybody's information, looks like two buildings, but it's really one building from a building code perspective. It has one common roof over it with a walk through corridor in the middle that you'll see more with the architectural presentation. But in any case, we have two transformers here that'll service mechanical rooms in either end of that retail building. Building A, we have a transformer positioned on the right side of roughly right here, which is next to our pump station. The pump station is is really entirely underground, other than a control panel that'll be situated above ground. We'll have a generator pad right next to it here that, so pump station with a generator to to run the pump station in case of a a power outage. Transformer for building A right next to it. Come down to building B and we've got reservation space here for three transformers. And this is right outside where the mechanical and electrical rooms are situated for building B. So transformers at three different locations for the three different buildings. I continue now, so water meter pit and for building C, we have one here and we have another one here coming into each of those mechanical rooms. For building B, again in blue, next to the transformers on the bottom here, be a water meter pit and that's that's underground, really. So it's it's not so much an above ground feature, but you mentioned water meter pits. So and then we have another one here for building A situated by our pump station transformer and generator. The, the, oh, I know, that's like grease traps. So for the restaurants, we need grease traps. We've got four of them. We got one positioned on the left side of building B, one on the right side of building B for the plumbing to come from where the the retail and restaurant spaces are, which are along this frontage of the building B area. And building C has also got restaurants in it. So again, we have one grease trap here and one grease trap here. Again, these are, these are entirely surface and below surface structures. You know, you'll see manhole lids on the top, but otherwise nothing is sticking above the the pavement. We've situated these to be in the parking spaces to keep the the drive aisle. You know, where the vehicles are really driving just that much clearer and freer. And then the other ones are behind the curb for the building A and B. So again, out of the vehicular area and I think that covers those types of utility structures.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Malman, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. Just point of order in terms of the public asking questions. Let me see if we have any members of the public, you know, witnesses tonight, but we can have our witnesses come back at every meeting. If you want to hold the public question to the end, that's fine with us, so we can keep our our presentation moving along.
I was going to hold it off until the end of this meeting. So as soon as your your last witness is done, I I will make it open to the members of the public that have attended tonight.
That's fine, me. Okay, then I'll call our architect Keith Peacock. Keith, you with us?
Yes, I am.
All right.
Keith, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, do you swear for and tell the truth before this planning board in its virtual format?
I do.
Okay, uh, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, it's Keith Peacock, K E I T H P E A C O C K.
Okay, Mr. Malman, if you would, uh, put his qualifications on.
Will do. You're licensed architect in this state, Mr. Peacock?
Yes, I am.
By whom are you employed? Just give us your educational background, your experience, please.
Sure, I'm a partner with Kitchen and Associates. We're a full 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 service architectural engineering, M E P, energy and planning and interiors design firm in located in Collinswood, New Jersey. I graduated from Jackson University with a Bachelor of Science, architectural major, licensed state in New Jersey, several other states. Testified before boards in Dover, New Jersey, New Brunswick, East Orange, and Jersey City.
And you're familiar with this project, the property, the plans that have been submitted?
Yes.
Any questions regarding his qualification as an architect? I guess, Eric, you still control the screen, is that correct? Did we lose Eric?
I'm I'm sorry, I'm still here. I was, I thought Keith was going to be controlling his own. Do I need to run his slides?
If I could run it myself, it would be good.
I'm not sure what the answer is. Can Keith, will Keith, you have access to the screen? Can you control it? If not, we'll have Eric run through for you.
He can.
Okay.
Uh, my share is grayed out at the moment. See if it'll do it.
Just stand by one second. Keith, you are, you are presenter.
Do you have it, Keith?
It's still showing grayed out as a share to share on my screen.
Well, I made you presenter. I'm not sure why it's grayed out.
Yeah, I see him as a presenter also, Earl.
Eric, what is your screen showing? Do you, are you still the presenter?
No, mine went, mine went gray and took that ability away from me about a minute or two ago when we first started this, so.
Eric, do you have the material to present?
Uh, yes, I do. I'll just have to get the the ability back because it's no longer, I I don't have the.
All right, Eric, you should have access now.
Yes, I do. Uh, one second, let me get these up on my.
I think for the record, we're starting with A twenty three, which is the first architectural exhibit.
Correct. Oh, did it come? I thought it came up. No. Come on.
No.
Hold on one second.
That looks like it's starting to to kick in. There we go.
Okay.
Let me just increase this.
That looks good.
Okay, let's just give me a shout when I need to flip.
Let's.
Go ahead and flip to the A twenty three, Eric.
Yep.
And Keith, I'm going to go to mute in a second because I'm told that when I'm not on mute, there's background noise. So just if you wouldn't mind, just to sort of run through the existing conditions and then work into the proposed conditions. I'll jump in if needed, but otherwise I'm going to go back on mute.
Very good. All right, this is our exhibit A twenty three, just to get everyone re- reoriented to the existing conditions out there. From this vantage point, Route ten is to the bottom of the screen. Our detention basin is sort of to the top in the in the edge of the woods. We're bound by the drive next to Delta Dental and you can see the existing office building that surrounded by parking, sea of parking all the way around it. All right, Eric, let's go to the next one. And this is our first image of of the proposed build out. We've talked about building A, B, and C. And you'll see in the top left, which is in the in the eastern portion of the site. We have building A, which is a four story building, two hundred and sixty two units. To the right and to the south of the property, we have building B, which is a four and five story residential building, mixed use podium, we have retail, we have residential. Two hundred and thirty six units includes this seven level parking deck that's tucked in in the inside of the building. And we have the ground floor retail across the north piece of the site. Then in the foreground, we have right along Route ten is building C, which is this full retail building that has frontages on both both sides of it that faces our our central plaza as well as the parking area on on the Route ten side. All right, let's go to the next one, right, Eric. All right, now we're looking at the ground floor plan and and we've we've turned this view around. So Route ten is to the north, top of the page. Delta Dental is now off to our left. It's the same orientation that Eric presented on all the civil drawings. So building A is to the right, building B is on the south, building C is on the north of of your of your page. So let me walk you through the the key colors here. So in the blues and purples are are residential units. The light, light purply pink color is the our studios. The dark dark purple are one bedrooms, the light blue are two bedroom units, and the aqua is three bedroom units. We have yellow, which is our indoor community and common areas that lobbies and fitness areas and such. In the brown, in the in the back of the right of building A and on B, those are our maintenance areas of building services, loading and and such. In the pinks and in the salmon color is our retail spaces across the ground floor in the in the front of building B and fully in building C across. And the pink is are the restaurants and the salmon is the retail spaces. So we talked about this West District Drive that comes in between us and Delta Dental. And we have our South District Drive, we have our main district drive that comes up. And we have this this woofer space and it was, oh, well, what does woofer mean? Well, it's a Dutch word that means that it's a living street. And as Eric had pointed out, we we have a curb to slow the traffic, we have flush curbs. And the idea on and the woofer is that it's a shared space for pedestrian motor traffic as well as bike traffic. And it's meant to to really be set up with low speeds for to, so it can accommodate those pedestrian activities mixing with the vehicle traffic and that's why we have it as as one way as well. It has flush curbs and landscape will get into that more with friendly hardscaping for pedestrian and vehicular traffic. And there's outdoor seating area for for the restaurants. The building entrances are located in along these main axes as well that we've kind of talked about already and I'll go into that a little bit more now as we talk about each each building. We have this parking deck in the back and we have a pedestrian bridge that crosses over. So in building A, we have two hundred and sixty two units. It's a it's a multifamily market rate inclusionary housing building and we have two hundred and sixty two units, we have forty two studios, one hundred and thirty eight one bedrooms, seventy eight two bedrooms and four three bedrooms, which you can see in the aquas in the top corner. Out of the two hundred and sixty two units in building A, twenty of those will be designated as affordable units. These units will be dispersed throughout the building and there'll be no knowledge about which ones are affordable or which ones are a regular market rate. There they'll be equal in size and interior finish to match the market rate units as well and it'll exceed the CO standards where bedroom and living room space sizes. All residents will have access to all of those amenities. And speaking of amenities, the building will have indoor fitness, we have community space, we have a conference center on the ground floor that faces the woofer. We have management leasing office, we have package mailrooms. And we have these two private courtyards that that landscape will testify to later on. In in this building, a hundred and twenty eight of these units will have private outdoor spaces, whether a balcony, a private terrace patio or stoops that will be located along the main, the main street for the ground floor, ground floor units. Hundred and forty one units will not include those exterior amenities. And we've placed them where there's there's visual reason for them also based on how we have balconies that, when I show you the facade, you'll understand how the balcony is sort of tuck into the the plays and in and outs of things and they make sense where they are. And so we don't have it for every unit, but we have it for just under fifty percent of the units, about forty something percent of the units have have those outdoor spaces. Building B, the building in the center, is market rate with the inclusionary. Building B, the building in the center, is market rate with the inclusionary affordable component. It also has this retail space on the ground floor, and it also has an age-restricted component that's going to be in to the right and down the vertical axis street as well. It'll have a hundred and eighty-seven units in the market rate affordable section. And that'll be a mix of fifty-eight studios, ninety-one one-bedrooms, thirty-three two-bedrooms, and five three-bedroom units in that part of the building. Out of the hundred and eighty-seven units, twenty-two of those units will be designated as affordable. And again, they'll be dispersed throughout the building, and they'll be equal in size and 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 finish matching all the market rate units as well. They'll exceed the COA standards. And again, all the residents will have access to all of the indoor and the courtyard amenities. Seventy-eight of these units will include private exterior spaces, your balconies, terraces, patios, or stoops. And a hundred and nine in this building will not include those types of spaces. Building B, across the front, we have about thirteen retail spaces that range from restaurants as well as as regular retail spaces that face out onto our wooer space. As I mentioned, the market on the right-hand corner of this building, on the upper floors and down on the ground floor along the right-hand side, we have the age-restricted fifty-five-plus community portion of the project that includes forty-nine market rate age-restricted units, thirty-three one-bedrooms and sixteen two-bedrooms. Thirty-six of those units will have private balconies and terraces and stoops, and thirteen do not include those amenities. The age-restricted area has its own separate lobby. It's off to the right of the vertical street, just south of that vehicular access to the parking garage. And and the market rate and affordable units have their access to their building is off the moon earth in the middle of the project. Let's see. So in the in the middle, sort of tucked in around the buildings of building B or the wings of building B is our parking deck. And it's a hundred and eighty-six spaces. We have an internal elevator that's to the to the top corner, close to the moon earth and stairs. We have eighteen ADA parking spaces. And we have eighteen charging stations, which we've talked about previously. Six of those are in this public area, and twelve will be in the residential component upstairs. And some of those are also designated as ADA spaces specifically in the in the EV charging. They will have their own charging spaces as well. So you can access the parking deck on lower levels from the South District Road, or you can access it from the the vertical district drive that comes up the central spine of the of the project. So let's see. What else do we have? Building C to the north here is resident is pardon me, is retail full with restaurants and retail. The brown areas are our mechanical spaces that we have aligned all the the work that Civil was mentioning earlier to. And there's a connecting spine, and it sort of separates the two halves of this building that allows for pedestrian access from that north parking area directly into the moon earth and those retailed and shopping area. So you don't have to go all the way around. You can you can just come right right through. And there's a visual reciprocity between those restaurants and and that space. So it won't be a tunnel, but it will be a living type space. All right, Eric, let's go to the next plan, please. So this is exhibit A twenty-six. This is our third-floor typical floor. And then you can see in this one, now you get a sense for the build-out of all the residential spaces above the retail. And the retail is a high base space, so it's about a story, two-story-high space, twenty-three feet. And so we have two levels of residential behind that. But in that space, we will start residential above it. We have terraces that overlook the water for the age-restricted. And to the right now, you can see this bridge connection that connects between the building A and the building B lobbies and the parking, the parking deck. And we have access to the from the parking deck directly into the elevator of building B in the front. As I mentioned, I think briefly, is that on the on the backside of both of buildings B and A, we have our loading. And there's a loading elevator there as well as pedestrian access. People can come in those places as well. Let's go to the next plan, Eric. So this is the upper floor of of building B, as you can see in this place. Now, we dropped off units on the right-hand side, and we have an outdoor terrace specifically for the fifty-five-plus community and an indoor community space dedicated specifically for those folks as well. To kind of back up and address one of the questions about the parking structure. The idea is that we're going to construct and sequencing, but we're going to construct this garage all at one time because of the nature of the large planks that have to come in for this precast. That garage is going to be constructed all in one sequence. Once we get that built, we will then have access to those lower floors. While we complete the construction of building B around it, we'll be able to utilize those lower levels of the parking garage and get people across to building A. But but the whole building, the whole parking deck itself will be constructed, and we'll have safe directions for folks to go from one side of the site to the other, and we'll work through the building department with those those requirements as we as we manage the egress path for temporary work as we move through through the construction of it. But the garage itself will be built all all in one one tranche. So just to give you a real quick recap on statistics, four hundred and ninety-eight units, forty-two of those are affordable units, forty-nine age-restricted, two hundred and thirty-five of the market rate have balconies, and two hundred and twenty-one do not, or these outdoor spaces. And we have roughly sixty thousand square feet of commercial space in the project. Eric, if you go back two slides to the ground floor, please. So one of the guidelines in the in the zoning and redevelopment agreement is green building initiatives. So just want to outline some of those those things that we have baked into the project at this point. And so you can look at the Rutgers Center for Green Building Manual for for some of these. There's LEED. There's green communities. There's a number of different groups out there that are providing programs for this. We will not be seeking any kind of lead in this project, but but we will be following Rutgers guidelines for for in these initiatives. And they break those down into a few categories: sustainable site, energy conservation, water conservation, country conservation, indoor environmental air quality, and the use of materials and resources in sustainable manners. So some of the things that we're going to be, we've already sort of worked into the project that we'll be having in our in our build-out of this, we have an adaptive reuse of our of an existing site. We're reducing the parking footprint with the structured parking deck, with the electric vehicle charging stations. We have proximity to economic activity. We're creating that, but there's others around with the office park right nearby. And as Eric has pointed out, in all of our improvements to the stormwater management, erosion control, enhanced rainwater management, and we're protecting and restoring habitat as they rebuild that basin in the back to the current standards. We'll be using a high efficiency for energy reduction. We're going to be using high-efficiency lighting systems, LED lights, Energy Star appliances and equipment, and light occupancy sensors in a lot of the common areas to take advantage of energy conservation there. Water reduction initiatives, low-flow water sense fixtures throughout the project, tenant submetering, which encourages the tenants then to be aware of their water usage, and therefore hopefully reduce the consumption of water and then the water that goes into the sanitary system as well. Materials and resource initiatives. Well, we're going to be using a white roof, so our SRI will be greater than point six-five, which will be reduced the heat island effect. Again, it's Energy Star Cool Roof and helps in the energy consumption as well. We'll be doing construction demo waste reduction as we recycle materials, crushing the concrete, and reusing it right there on site. Indoor environmental quality, low VOCs on the materials for use inside, walk-off mats and grills. We'll have a pedestrian-friendly design for the landscape lighting and benches with multiple entries, eyes on the street. We're encouraging use of the stairs by putting windows and daylighting our stairs, de-emphasizing parking by having it remote and, as we talked about in this parking deck, away from most of that pedestrian traffic out on the moon earth. And final piece there is access to recreational facilities and open space, which we have on this, the moon earth in the middle. All right, Eric, let's go forward to two more to the materials page. One more. Twenty-eight. Okay, part of the redevelopment plan includes parameters for the architecture of the buildings. These include building context, form and mass, and the green building features, which I already touched on. Zoning encourages the incorporation of building elements that emulate the American Craftsman style evoked from the Stickley Museum and Craftsman Farm. So I'm going to go through some of these now, and then as as I show you the renders, you'll you'll get a sense for how those play out in the 3D world. So we have building context, American Craftsman style. It's exemplified by simple forms and strong horizontal lines, low-pitched roofs, deep overhangs with eaves, often with exposed rafters, square columns, the wide torches, painted wood siding, and earthy tones and rustic masonry bases. So how does that play out in our project? Well, those those styles are really for a smaller-scale building. When we translate into this multi-multi-story building and the larger facade lengths, they don't translate directly. So we've taken elements of those, and we've and we've brought those into the into the project in pieces, but not as one overall composition of one singular play of elements. So we have horizontal projecting cornices, as you can see in this first image to the left here. This is one of the corners of the building, and this is a theme that happens in in all the buildings. And we differentiate between material colors that have it shift a little bit, but but the the base of the the framework of the architecture is the same. Our main entrances are enhanced with the deep, deep canopies. We do this on the the residential units that are along the streets as well. And then we have this variegated brick that's that matches with these earthly tones that we have. So you can see across the bottom here, we have the list of the different materials, and it changes from panels to lap siding to the to a couple of shades of the brick that we have, and we also have a natural wood that's also being used on the on the project. So another piece of it is that building mass and form guidelines, the part of the redevelopment and zoning. So avoid long uninterrupted facades, breaks in the facades segmented into no more than a hundred-foot-long sections with five-foot offsets, articulated cornices, pedestrian connectivity signage, corners are important, balconies, awnings, roof articulations, living walls, civic art, screening mechanical equipment, residential at grade shall be at least a hundred, one-point-five feet above adjacent grade. These are all guidelines that are in in the zoning redevelopment, and and so we're we're applying those into this project as well. So in our massing, the building's oriented with entries towards that pedestrian-friendly sidewalk, which I pointed out in the in the plan. We have this ruined space in the middle that everything is sort of focused on and and comes off on both sides of. And then we have varying heights of our parapets, our cornices, and those play not only in height, but also in play in and out in plan to create these languages for the building that that are sections of buildings that are all sort of put together, but we don't have an ABA BAB facade. There's there's these these groups of buildings that all come together to create this overall form. See. And so we have residential units on all sides. So we minimize the blank walls by, like we said, putting windows in our stair towers. And when you go to the secondary facades on the backside by the off-ramp and on the south roads, those facades all have the same articulation and play of facade elements and windows and balconies. So we don't just dress up the front and leave the back unfinished. It's a it's a continuous project all the way around. So the the awnings and the canopies that have along these residential units, like you can see in the first unit, the first image to the left, there's a stoop, and there's a canopy, and then there's balconies up above it. And the fourth image over to the right, which is a similar location, similar configuration in the fifty-five-plus. Again, there's stoops and and canopies, and this helps to break up that facade and not make it overwhelming when you're down at the street at the street level. And like I said, the color palette is a lot of warm earth tones, and it repeats in these bays that address as it as you move through through the project. And it's not shown in this particular piece, but you'll see in the upcoming renders, the commercial spaces also have awnings or canopies over those to do similar, to start to tie all this together. All right, so all that said, let's jump into some beautiful images. So Eric, let's go to the next piece, please, twenty-nine. So just to get everybody reoriented here, we're looking at the ground floor plan and and Route ten is to the north, Delta ten is to the left, and across this south district drive will be our first image, where we're looking at at the back of of the project, looking into the into this main main street. So let's go to the next one, Eric. So looking at the at this image here, we see to the left, at the very far bottom corner, the left is the is the lower access into the parking garage. And you can see the the spandrels are shown. Then we have these vertical sections of metal panel in these in the vertical bays that break up the facade. Across the bottom twenty feet high, we have a living wall. You get much higher than that, and it starts to become problematic for the living wall to remain alive. So we've just used it up to this this bottom level. In the center of the view, you see the corner of the age-restricted fifty-five-plus community section of the building with balconies. We have stoops on the ground floor with that move along the main street. We have our outdoor terrace for the fifty-five-plus community on there. To the far right of the image is the is the corner, south corner of building A. There's an entrance off of into the parking lot or from the parking lot into into the building directly from the parking lot there. And there's stoops along that side that also go up, and there's balconies on the corner. And in the middle, you see the bridge. So we have this pedestrian bridge that connects at that third floor. It's an indoor-conditioned bridge that allows the residents to park in the parking deck and traverse over to building A and B completely indoors. Once they get out of their car, there's no need to be outside. And then we have elevators on that side that folks can can use as well.
Keith, if I could ask you also to point out the the first monument sign we see here?
Yes, correct. You can see just beyond a little orange car. Yes, correct. You can see just beyond a little orange car there in the corner is is one of the monument signs that we have for the project tucked in the corner there. We have pedestrian crosswalk from the the feature hotel in Hanover. So again, it's about making a walkable site. We have these crosswalks where we allow for pedestrians to have a safe journey across Across these roads and with traffic stops to also allow it to happen safely. That's pretty much it for this view. Let's go to the next one, Eric. Get your reoriented again where our next view is going to be. So now we're going to move back out to route 10 and we're going to look at the at the corner of building A and the in the corner of retail C. Building C in the retail, you get a sense for how this will be perceived as you traverse along route 10. Let's go to the next one, 32. So this is, like I said, this is the corner looking southeast and we see the corner of of building A. We have balconies, we have the accentuated cornice, we have exposed rafters. We have project signage for orientation, the balconies, we have solar shade on top of the balconies. The stoops along the street frontage there, again pedestrian crosswalks. And you can start to see the form of the of the building that you have a corner element, then you have another section of of building mass. And then there's another section that you'll see in the next image that starts to look at 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 these in larger Pieces of building that play in and out as well as up and down. And with parapet heights and our balconies then also tuck tuck back into those those pieces. So they're not sort of hanging off the building so much, but but it all creates one composition And and feels unified at the end of the day. And you can see the warm materials, earth tones and how those translate to the to the larger building and to the right, you see the The corner of the retail that has frontage on both the route 10 side as well as the moon earth side. And allowing for that parking and pedestrian traffic to to funnel all all around the site.
Keith, sorry to bother you again.
Sure.
Could you could you point out the wood material as you you've applied it to these?
Yeah.
From these elevations, especially my favorite, yeah, the underhang.
Yeah, right. So underneath, as you see underneath the the cornice at the corner, there's we have wood use there. And the and the exposed rafter tails that are that are hanging out there. We also have it in the spandrel between between the balconies at that second set of of building Down in the image right behind the red car. That those spandrels in there also have the wood, but but yeah, we have this this wood on the underside of of those those canopies. Cornices to to again bring in that those earth materials, earth tones. And sort of tie this whole stickly field together in this larger building format. Alright, let's go to the next layer. So now we're going to move into the in into the the heart of the project and we're going to look back at the entrance to building A. And we're standing out on the moon earth and we're starting to experience this. And I think when you see the 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 views from landscape will show the the moon earth in a in a more Other other configurations versus regular traffic type pattern configuration. So let's go to 34, please. So this is again, looking at at we're standing in the lunar, we're looking at building A entry. And you can see that there's a there's a block of of this this part of the building, which is the entrance. Again, the cornices were accenting the underside with the wood, rafter tails. And the and the you're seeing a piece of a building and another piece of building, we're playing in and out. And those materials change with those those chunks of facade as well, so that You get a sense for larger pieces of building and not not smaller little rhythm, if you will, of buildings. And again, you can see in the in the spandrel, we have the wood in the spandrel pieces, we have brick at the ground floors, it's variegated brick. The ground floor and the under the lobby there, we have The conferencing center, we have our fitness space. And so those those are active with larger glass going right up above the lobby is Our lounges that are on each floor for the residents and those also look over the the moon earth and we have that reciprocity Of visual for the that will be lit at night as well as, you know, having the the moon earth Activity as a place you could go sit and see the activity, but not have to actually be out there if you choose not to. We have our large stickly chair out there on the plaza as well. And you can see again, the the earth tones, how this is all playing together. Let's go to the next one, please, Eric. Eight thirty six. So now we're almost in around the same spot, but we're turned around now, we're looking at the entrance into building, building B. And we have this little walkway space that carries all the way across from building C behind building C at the parking lot on north. By route 10 comes all the way through and gives us direct access into the parking parking deck. And we have our lobby right there as well for building B. And and then we have the age restricted has its lobby off to the right that I as mentioned earlier. So let's go to the three D, the next one, please, 36. So this is looking at, like I said, the entry into building B. And again, the the entry is accent with a large cornice. We have the same wood going on underneath rafter tails. We have our our string lights across the the moon earth. Our our retail spaces are high bay, so they're affording a lot of visual between the retail and this outdoor space. We have upper balconies and you get the sets for the, again, the wood in the spandrel that moves across the project. And and you can see the variegated brick, we have, we had, we have several tones of those as we use in different pieces of the project. And and so like sort of straight ahead, right where the hand is, is where the lobby doors are into building B. And just to the left with the guy with the briefcase there is where you go into the into the parking deck. And we have seating, outdoor seating in the for the restaurants on on several sides as you move through the the moon earth space. And and then to the left of this image at the top is is the from the the brick where it says 55 district. That's where the age restricted parts of the building are and the market rate affordable is to the is to the right half of the of that project of that building. Let's go to the next one, Eric. So now we're going to jump up and experience being up on one of the the terraces of the 55 plus community and kind of looking down on all the activity in the moon earth. So we're going to be standing on that one of those terraces and we'll be looking in a north westerly direction, looking down on on the retail and the whole moon earth. So you can see here, the 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 activity of the curve of the street and it just plays for a softness. And it's going to really do a lot to to slow down the traffic and really make for a pedestrian friendly space. And as you can see, the gentleman here is enjoying the view from up there with a nice cup of coffee And looking down at all the activity that's going on in a different times. As Mark had mentioned with the farm act farmers market activity and different things that that are planned to go on in the moon earth. It's going to be quite quite a view vantage point to view, view all the activity down in the moon earth. And as you can see in the middle here, so you see that store that says olive to the next left of it is the is the access point from The back of building C, route 10 parking through the whole complex into the into the parking garage, which gives you that sort of central spine Of of the project as well. Let's go to the next one. And our our final image will be looking, staying at Delta Dental end of the project, looking back into our moon earth and our retail space. And with building A in the background, just give you a sense for Evening nighttime activity that the the project will will have for our restaurant goers and residents. Let's go there. So again, looking, looking back all the way at the far end is building A and you can see those those lounges are lit up and and you know, Always be this sort of light beacon at the end of the road and and creating this visual reciprocity between the two spaces, the outdoor space and those indoor spaces. We have the the retail spaces that are lit and and activating the street and evening with the dining outside. We have a cornice is in the corner again, accenting those those corner towers. We have our district signage and uplighting for our building facade and our string lights for for nighttime lighting events. So you know, to sort of wrap up. You know, our color palette is warm and we have these earthly craftsman tones. The style is is reminiscent of the stickly style, but but done in a in the handle in this larger scale of facades. And we have these these step backs that happen throughout the building in in tranches to Articulate the different sections of the facade. And again, the the parapet's also going up, changing elevation to to match that. And our, as I said, our pedestrian friendly where we have our Central spine of the moon earth and the main street where we have stoops and lots of activity for pedestrians To be engaged outside in safe and we believe to be a a real Asset to precipity and and the region. So with that, we'll wrap up and be happy to take questions.
Thanks, Mr. Pekka. Any questions from the board?
Ms. Favate, would you like to start?
Sure, I just have a few. So I think you had mentioned that you'll comply with all the affordable housing requirements as it pertains to unit mix, size, size, accessibility, etc.
Correct.
Okay. Um. Oh, the in the parking garage, how will the public spaces be separated from the residential spaces? Will there be some sort of a gate?
Where they'll have to park. Well, we'll get to a point in the at the and can't recall what what level that exactly is, but we have a we have a gate plan where we will Allow only allow residential units, residential parking to happen above. They'll have their EV charging in their space and we'll have the EV charging in the on the ground floor For for the restaurant goers as well.
Okay, and there'll be internal signage that will indicate all of that.
Correct.
Will will the spaces be assigned to to specific units?
I believe that to Mark, I don't I don't believe so, but I'll leave that to Mark to to address more of a Operational.
Looking for my, no, that's it's not intended to have those dedicated to a specific unit.
Okay. And then, you know, you went through how many units have private stoops, terraces or patios and how many don't? Are there any of the COA units that have those types of spaces? I'm just curious.
None of the affordable units have have those spaces.
Okay. Affordable units are not the only ones that don't have those spaces, correct? Market rate units that also do not have those spaces.
It's about 55, 45 split in terms of there's more units in both buildings that do not have those spaces than do.
Okay. Okay, on the side edge, I think the The officer should should review the size of not just the monument signs, but I saw some of the wall signage on the residential portions. We just make sure that they comply with the the size and if they don't, then you can seek relief, but Some of them look like they might be a bit a bit big. I haven't reviewed the The redevelopment plan signage recently, but I'll coordinate with her on that and make sure that you comply.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Okay, Mr. Kajiana?
No, no comments.
All right. Any members of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
I assume there is no solar panel construction on any of the roofing?
We are not planning on putting any PV panels on the project at this time, no.
Thank you, Mr. Pekka.
You're welcome.
Other members of the board with questions?
Chairman.
Go ahead, Ms. Hernandez.
Hi, thank you for this presentation. It's very beautiful. I just have a few questions on. Well, it's just, it's just so much about this with the sustainability and the the whole concept. I there'll be a landscape architect portion to this?
Correct.
So, okay, so I'll say that for them. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well done.
Thank you. I did want to address one question that I came up earlier about the storm pipe that Landscape will show there are these indoor or these outdoor internal courtyards. We will coordinate with our, we have in-house MVP, we'll be doing all that coordination For underground sanitary storm off the buildings as well as the storm coming from from those courtyards. And we'll coordinate all that stuff. We work in a in a product that's a Ben products 3D modeling, which delivers all these wonderful renders. But it also allows us to do all of those Clash detection, detection and coordination of all those mechanical pieces. So we will, we will have all of that done when we When we get into the in the construction docks for permits.
All right. Any other members of the board?
Sir Chairman, quick question, yeah.
Please go ahead.
Is it accurate that the parking spaces will not be assigned to the residential units?
That's correct.
So then, and it will be gated, right? So How and how will it be managed when the when the garages fall? Right? People will just be roaming around, right? In the in the garage going up and down. Nobody would know the garage is full.
It's more of a Operational question, I guess, Mark.
Well, the parking for this project has been designed, which our traffic engineer will get into as far as the parking need. The amount of parking spaces reserved for residential Will be enough. I think one per unit or one per bedroom reserved for the residential behind a gate. The rest will be used for visitors of the residential or for the retail restaurant.
Right, right. But see, just as an example, right, 100 bedrooms, 100 parking spots, fine, but people have multiple cars, right? So then they would want to get in. How would that be managed? I think I think that would be Traffic will be moving around just trying to find a parking just for the residence.
Key. It shows the parking. Circuit later around the floor, if it gets ramped and ramps where the gate will be. Right, so. So if you can't get in. If you get into the gate, then there's a spot for you if you have a key fob for the residential. Otherwise, you circulate through the garage, just like you would Anywhere else looking for In a bad spot.
Right, Eric, go back one one slide, please.
So wouldn't that be generating a lot of traffic, unnecessary traffic? I mean, I mean, everybody I know, they have multiple cars, right? So.
Well, the project is overparked, so we have, we have the capability to park more vehicles than than is required by 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 code. And as as Mark had pointed out, we will have we'll have a gate, but you can see that the parking deck is a is a three, three bay deck. 60 foot wide bays in each. And so you have the ability to circle around and and then go back out, but We will, as we have the control on that upper gate. And we'll have to see how I guess management works that out as far as providing key fobs for only enough vehicles for those spaces upstairs. We have the we have the own surface parking to the south that's for the residents and around the back building. Building A for the for the residents as well. So You know, shoppers, it's a come and get as you can, I guess, but for the for the residents, if they have a fob, they will get, they'll have access. you know, shoppers, it's a come and get as you can, I guess, but for the, for the residents, if they have a fob, they will get, they'll have access and they'll, they'll have a space in the parking deck.
Yeah, they will have an assigned specific spot once they get beyond the, uh, beyond the gate. And the way this is designed, we're anticipating the restaurant and retail users to fill up from the bottom up because
Right.
that's the easiest spot for them and for the guest of the residential or the residential overflow to fill up from the top down. So we think by design, people are going to be unifying all parts of the, all parts of the, uh, the garage. But they will circulate, they, they will circulate looking for their favorite spot or the most convenient spot for them on that particular day, no doubt.
Yeah, again, I'm concerned with the, just the traffic, right? For example, right? Somebody lives on the floor, second floor and second floor is full. Now they must be roaming around on other floors and
Well, the resident.
The other floors are full as well. We don't know that. Yeah.
Right. Well, the residential parking will only be on the upper floor, so they'll have to circulate to get up to that, to that level. And then there's, there's parking spaces. So like
Simplify here because we're, we're circling around. It sounds like Mr. Dajesh is indicating that it would be useful if there was some kind of automated indicator to let people know when the lot is full. So they don't have to drive around looking for an empty spot. Or
Or, or parking, right? Or assign parking. One bedroom gets one parking spot, two bedroom, get two parking spot, whatever, some, some sort of formula, right? So then we know we have a number of parking spots and a number of units, we know, we can fit it in.
Yeah, the residential will have, uh, once you get beyond that gate, there will be assigned parking spaces and, and um, it will be up to management to decide who gets what spaces or if the residential units on the top floor will, will get spaces on the top floor of the parking garage and so forth. But I, I don't think, you're not getting into the garage unless you're into the gated area unless you have a parking spot.
Right.
Okay. No. So I just heard there will be assigned parking spots for the resident, residential.
Residential, please. Correct.
Okay. Okay. My bad. So initially I heard that there will be no assigned parking and that's where I was going. If there is no assigned parking, then traffic will be all around. But if there is assigned parking, then we know that we have enough parking.
Right. And it's segregated in, in this layer cake. So the, so the retail is catches, can, and the residential is controlled via the gate and, and assigned spaces.
Okay. If assigned, then, then I'm good. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Other members of the board? I, I have a, two questions myself then. Um, first item I noticed is, is in the, uh, one of the, uh, the lighting that you have on the string lights, has that been measured and approved by the fire department? Cause I'm concerned about their managing equipment around string lights.
Well, the, the lights are above, uh, your normal, uh, distance for, uh, we have sixteen foot poles. So they're, they're above the, uh, any overpass, uh, that equipment would have to travel down anyway to get there. Uh, so, uh, we did, uh, have these on the plans that was reviewed by the fire department. I don't really need any comments from them, uh, in regards to those.
Cause I would imagine on their, um, equipment that extends upward, they would then have to find holes in your, in your string lights. That sounds like something they would have a lot to say about. So, uh, if you're saying they've already reviewed that, then I'll, I'll take your word for it. Cause it's on the record.
We did, we did not receive comments in regard to that. Um, the, the, like I said, these, these were on the drawings that were submitted, but I don't recall that we received any comments back from them, uh, with regard to the string lights.
And, and, and please, this is, it's a great comment and we're very, this is very much our desired, um, impact we're trying to achieve here. But if we need to point this out to the fire chief and make accommodations, we're certainly happy to, uh, to do so.
Okay. I'd appreciate that. The other comment I have, um, regarding the outdoor seating, is that going to be dedicated to the specific units there that the seating is in front of? Um, is this just open to anybody that's passing by?
Yeah, I can, I can address that for you. And that's another good question. We have, uh, for this project, two liquor license. Those locations will have dedicated outdoor seating. For those restaurants, these other areas you see where it, it's shown here in front of the coffee corner are meant to be more communal spaces. So if somebody wants to come with a brown bag lunch from Delta Dow, they can sit here and eat or any of the fast casual restaurants can get their food and take it to wherever they want. And these more common, um, common scene areas is, is the intention. Now, as we get specific tenants in here, um, we may tweak that a little bit here and there, but that generally is, is what we're trying to, to achieve here.
Okay.
It's a mix of, it's a mix of both, I guess.
Right. And the, and the restaurant spaces with the liquor license has had that, and one of the other views we showed looking down on the, on there, uh, those are, are sort of contained and fenced areas as requirements of the, uh, liquor, liquor laws.
Yeah. And Eric, if you were to go back to the, uh, balcony.
Yep.
You can see where the, the road curves, it creates a larger area for those liquor license with the, uh, secured fence dining areas.
Okay. Very good. Uh, the last question I have is regards to the number of units and their number of affordable units you have. If I've done my math correct, you have four hundred ninety-eight total units?
Yes.
Okay. And you have forty-two affordable units, correct?
Correct.
Now, my understanding was when this project was originally, um, had its overlay zone approved was the plan was to have eighty-two units, which was close to the four hundred, which was twenty percent of the four hundred ten that were originally expected. So what I'm seeing here is that you've increased the number of units and you've decreased the number of affordable units. Both of those things concern me.
I can, I can speak to that a bit. Um,
Okay.
The, the redevelopment plan, uh, which was basically agreed to some years ago, the original redevelopment plan.
In twenty twenty, January twenty twenty.
Uh, no, even earlier than that. Um, I think it was before my time, actually.
Well, I'm looking at this one from twenty twenty. So.
Well, it, it required a fifteen percent set aside, but a portion of about half of those units, and Mark, you can speak to this as well. Half of those units could be satisfied offsite. Um, and that is, you know, that is unique to this particular redevelopment agreement, but, um, they will be making a payment into the affordable housing trust fund. Is that correct, Mark? Uh, to cover those offsite units?
Yes, that, that's, that's correct. And when, when we made the change, the COVID related changes and added the age restricted units, we, uh, added more onsite units. We did not increase our offsite, payments we would be making. So we actually increased the number of onsite units when we added those additional, uh, age restricted units.
So then are we receiving payment and/or, um, units to account for the hundred units that we're expecting out of a five hundred unit property?
Well, it's, I, I don't have the numbers in, in front of me. But I, I don't believe it's a hundred units. But there's a mixture between onsite units. I believe it's forty-two and I don't have the exact number, um, of the units we're, we're paying into, but we can certainly get that. It's whatsoever is, is in the redevelopment plan, redevelopment agreement and financial agreements for sure.
Right.
That's correct. And we, we can get those numbers confirmed for the next time. But it is, it is compliant with the redevelopment agreement as well as the affordable housing plan.
Okay. Cause Susan, as, as you're well aware, we have a, a, we have a very strong requirement, uh, which, you know, but I'm concerned if we're not getting those units from here, which other developments are going to have to be created in order to satisfy that need? And there were a lot of, you know, quote unquote alternate sites that were in our plan, but those sites are not very desirable to a lot of our residents. And if we're not getting them from here, then we're looking at additional development.
I think the intent is that the, the in lieu of payments would go towards buying down existing units and, and existing apartment buildings and, and restricting those to be affordable. That is the intent, um, so that it actually doesn't result in new development. It's essentially using apartment, you know, stock that you have now and making more.
Oh, sorry for airing our internal dirty laundry on, on this.
No, it's, it's important to get, to get it right. And, and I will say that, um, you know, all the affordable housing folks have been kept pretty well abreast of this whole project. And, and when they came in with additional units, uh, after the COVID pandemic, they did have to increase their affordable housing set aside as well, um, proportionally.
Okay.
That's in your BFG report. You have, uh, a statement, when completed, the total building program will consist of about thirty-five thousand square feet, yada, yada, yada. It will have forty-two units will be designated as affordable. Forty-nine will be market age restricted and the remaining thirty-three affordable units required to be provided, the applicant will provide per unit payment into the township's affordable housing trust fund.
All right. Thanks for looking that up.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes.
Okay. That, that answers my questions then. Um, any other board members with questions? All right. Well, at this time, since we've, uh, passed our nine forty-five cutoff, I do want to make time. If there's any members of the general public that have questions for either of the witnesses that have presented tonight. So, um, Mr. Hoffker, if you wouldn't mind opening things up to general public. If any members would like to participate, please raise your hand. Nor if you have any additional instructions for them.
Nope. There are no hands raised.
Okay. Well, with that said, then I will, uh, close the public portion. There'll certainly be additional opportunities. Oh, I, okay. Tom, am I seeing? Tom, forgive me. I'm having trouble pronouncing your last name, but.
Yes, there, there is one hand raised.
Okay. Uh, can we give him his mic?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. I, I think you were put on mute again.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So I was wondering, uh, on the stormwater basin, are there going to have to be trees removed? Sorry. Who do you want to look, please? Excuse me?
Yeah. Uh, sir, you have to give us your name and your address, please.
Okay, sure. My name is Tom Lucinezy. That's L U C I N E S E. Forty-one Cross Road and over New Jersey.
Thank you.
So you mentioned improvements to the stormwater basin and I was just wondering, are trees going to be removed to do that work? Or are any trees in the back of the property, the south side of the property needs to be removed?
So, uh, this is Eric Schwartz speaking. Maybe one moment. Sorry. Let me get my video back on. I can. Um, yes, there will be some trees removed associated with that expansion of that stormwater, uh, management basin.
Does it go all the way back to where the, the Malapartis Brook kind of goes to?
No, we stopped short to there. There's actually, um, uh, there's, there's, uh, the answer is no, it does not go all the way back to the brook. There will still be some trees, uh, behind the basin before you get to the brook.
Eric, maybe if you show your, can you show your storm drainage plan again? Does it?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Let me see here.
Or your, your memo plan?
Bear with me for a minute. I I don't know if I have that plan handy. The, hopefully. So I zoom in on the grading and drainage plant here a little bit. If you, so this area is all part of the existing basin.
Okay.
Right. So that's, that's already quite clear, right? So then the area to the right, uh, is areas where there will be trees cleared. We end up with a, uh, maintenance access area that is, that is in this zone to get to this portion of the basin, but you would still have trees. You'd still have trees remaining, you know, on, on this area that kind of behind this basin expansion, if you will. And then behind the existing basin on the bottom, I circle down here. None of that is being cleared and none of this area here and all of the brook area here is being cleared. So.
If you see, if you see your squiggly lines in the aqua on top, those are, it, it's, it's really not that many trees. I don't think that's, uh, that's being taken out right where the two ninety contour crosses through.
Right. So in, in, in large part, so where this basin is going, um, here, I'll tell you what, if I can give you a little more color. All right. So this basin expansion above my red line, that's all existing parking. All right. That will remove the asphalt from and excavate out to make more stormwater area. So then the area below, you know, this area, you know, is, is behind the curb. But if you look closely at these squiggly lines here, you know, that's a little pocket of trees that has to come out. And here has a little pocket of trees that, that, that get, um, that get removed. So it's, um, this area, the site, I, I don't think we're eliminating many trees. I hope that answers it.
Yeah. Thank you for covering that. I appreciate that. And also, did you say you were having a traffic officer also address later on?
We, we, yes, we have a traffic engineer who will be testifying about the overall traffic study and the roadway improvements.
All right. So I'm just wondering how much traffic is going to be going on the south side of the property behind? It looks like quite a bit. And if there's a speed limit that's going to be set behind there.
Okay. Is that something we can save for the traffic engineer?
Sure, sure. That sure. I understand.
Excellent.
The last question, is there anything in terms of, uh, trying to keep the noise on the south side of the property to be consistent with what it is today? Or there's no sort of sound barrier that's, that's going to protect the, the presence of Hanover that live on that side?
Well, I would suggest that it's going to be tough since there's no sound there today, um, due to it being a vacant, uh, vacant property. Um, so I, I'm not sure exactly how to, uh, to answer that, but there, there will be, um, more noise on the site than there is today. How much that will transfer over to, uh, to the other side of, right? It seems like a pretty decent distance, a thousand feet maybe from building to building with a lot of, uh, plants, you know, vegetation, existing tree lines in there. But we're not going to have, you know, uh, music playing as, you know, we've got, we've got residential tenants to, uh, protect as well.
So Marco, it is the fact that if we think about where the outdoor activity is, it's buffered by, it's buffered by this building, right? Cause when the, the bulk of the outdoor activity is in between B and C. So this building B is going to be a huge sound barrier.
Correct.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. Seeing no other hands raised, I'll close the public portion for this evening and, uh, and I guess we'll, um, have to get you another date.
That'd be great, Mr. Chairman. What do you suggest?
That'd be great, Mr. Chairman. What do you suggest?
All right, July twelfth?
July?
Correct.
You can't, we can't get it earlier than that. It seems like a long way off.
Booked. We are booked solid.
Is there a chance that something else may adjourn? Perhaps we can be carried to a different meeting and in case something adjourns and we can squeeze in? Perhaps, perhaps a special meeting?
You know, that I can't tell you. I, I'd have to poll the board and, you know, it also involves other people other than the board because this is being held virtually. So I would have to, you know, follow up with our IT people and see if they have open time to do it because they, they don't just deal with planning board, they deal with Board of Adjustment Council and a, you know, a whole slew of other committees. So I'd have to check with them to see if they'd even be willing.
Well, could we carry it earlier? During that interviewing time, decide whether we can get some other special meeting at some other date rather than carry it to July? And if, if you carry it, for instance, to a meeting later in May and it didn't work out, we can adjourn that night and carry it to some other date that we agree upon rather than agreeing now to hold it, you know, hold off until July. It's just a long stretch for us. Going.
I will suggest.
I'm sorry.
More than halfway done with our testimony. I think our two longest ones were Eric and and Key.
You know, I can discuss it tomorrow with the chairman and, you know, and how we want to go forward to see if there's any possibility of a special meeting. However, you could also lose in that time, July twelfth, and my second July meeting is booked, you'd be in August.
Mr. Chairman, could I suggest that we adjourn this meeting till the next meeting, at which time we will only reconvene it for the purposes of determining a date?
Well, I think our next meeting, we have other items on that. Are you mean to carry this to the next meeting?
Carry it to the May, the next May meeting, simply for the purposes of establishing the next state that we can hear it.
I think that's a good suggestion. We could then decide whether the next meeting is going to be July or something earlier than that. In the meantime, perhaps you can hold that July twelfth spot for us, maybe over the next two weeks.
All right. Nora, we, we'll discuss the various number of issues we need to, because I don't think I have all the information I need to make a firm decision, but I think Tom's suggestion is, is a reasonable one. As long as the applicant understands that they won't be able to present during that meeting.
Right. This is what we have to do to make a decision about a special meeting, to carry it to the next meeting for announcement of that date. So we'll.
So what is the next, what is the next date in May?
All right. And, and Mr. Wenzel, I just want to make sure you, you feel like we're doing everything correctly here?
Right. Well, I, I'm sure that Tom will agree to waive the time to at least get us the next meeting. And, you know, it, it's really not a legal issue so much as a scheduling issue. So it's, it's really to the board's pleasure, you know, to, to see what it can do to accommodate the applicant.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the legal issue is just the continuity of notice. If we carry it to a May meeting, then our notice is still continued. And then in the May meeting, you would announce whatever the public hearing will be, again, without further public notice. So we wouldn't have to go through mailing notice to folks again.
Right. As long as you provide the extensions, you would not.
Yeah, that's.
The next meeting would be May seventeenth.
Okay. So why don't we carry it with my suggestion, carry it to May seventeenth without further notice? Put us first on the agenda for scheduling only, and at that point, we can decide when we'll actually come back and present additional testimony. Does that work?
That's fine.
Yes.
I would move that motion. Dinsmore.
Does that require a motion?
No, not really. I appreciate, but I appreciate Tommy, democracy is great, you know? We figured that out for years. But we can simply have, since we're just carrying to the next meeting, Mr. Malman has indicated on behalf of his client, he's waiving the time for the extension to get us to the next May meeting, whatever date that is. I still have an April calendar up. And at that point, well, conversations will be had and decision, decision will be made. I think that's sufficient.
All right. Good summary. It's May seventeenth is the next date, I believe. Okay.
And it's also at seven thirty PM, then without any further notice to the public?
A hundred percent.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Then we'll say goodnight and thank you very much.
All right. So we're carrying this application over. Thank you very much, Mr. Malman and, and your team. We'll see you on the seventeenth. With that said, any other members of the planning board have anything to present tonight? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting.
Don't move, Dan.
Okay, I, I heard Dinsmore first, and Basari, are you seconding?
Happy to be the second. I'll second.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
I.
I opposed. All right, hearing none, well, the eyes will have it. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, Mark.
Good night, Michael. Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everybody.